It was approval of permanent cash transfers, this one is temporary cash transfers. The other agenda also has permanent items open until the end.
Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Mitchell? Members of the board, you mentioned that we never see that.
Just flip them on. Just switch out the topic.
All right. Mr. Hinneman, you approved the permanent cash transfer as part of the board budget packet at our last meeting. So the three things that were consolidated, recommended for consolidation by Mr. Manini and approved were the permanent cash transfer, the operating budget, and also the establishment of an emergency fund. Those were all three approved together. I did give you the temporary cash transfers. So state statute requires, as we have budget counting, that each one of our funds not have a deficit balance at the end of the year. As we have several funds that are on a reimbursement basis, there's a temporary loan that occurs from the operational fund to these funds. We had been on a several-year trajectory, including this year, of actually decreasing the amount of loans that we had outstanding. We were actually on track to be down about $800,000. The state has made a significant change to one of our capital improvement funds. So what's commonly referred to as the two-mill fund, Fund 31-700, the state is going to split it apart. They're going to make part of it the reimbursement state match, the other part the local ad valorem taxes that we received with the two-mill levy that was elected in January. That change has caused a change in the way that we're going to have to actually monitor those funds. So the very last line of the temporary cash transfers this year, you're going to see that significant balance that we're having to do a temporary cash transfer for, and the reason is the change that the state is making.
Okay. And it's listed that way in the minutes, but I couldn't remember that. I just wanted to note, omit it accidentally. Oh, thank you.
No problem. Did anyone have a question on the temporary cash transfers? There are two pages. The column in green is actually the change that's being made, and then the second page is essentially the same information once...
You have to approve the agenda first.
No, the agenda. We have to approve.
Well, approve the agenda first. Okay, so approval of the agenda at this time then, if there's no more questions.
Motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Manini.
Mr. Hinneman?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Okay, now we will move down to approval of the consent agenda items, 4A and 4B.
Mr. Mitchell?
Ms. Manuelito.
Is that the, this other page that we got in our packet?
This one here?
Yeah.
This is, this is for 5A.
This one here?
Yes.
Okay, this one's the one here.
I think this one's for 4B.
4A, and then we have 4A, 4A and 4B.
Where's 4A?
4A is what they, she mailed me, or us, to look at the current bills.
Okay. That's... Oh, this one's...
Any other questions?
And then 4B's the 2016, 2017 initial budget. Any questions?
Mr. Mitchell, I see no questions to be asked. I've moved that the financial section of Senator Antina Ives be approved as presented.
Motion to approve by Mr. Manini, roll call.
Mr. Hinneman?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Okay, now we'll now move down to the new business, which is the approval of the temporary cash transfer. Transfers funds from the operational fund, $11,000 to various funds pending cash reimbursement requests at the conclusion of the recess, the recess meeting in July. This is the one you have.
Yeah. Okay, Javana, can you come back up, please?
Sure. So I gave you two pages, and they're essentially the same information presented in slightly different formats. On the second page is a summary of first, the funds where we're going to have to increase the loan from operational to the various funds. On the second piece, that's actually where funds where we've been reimbursed, and we're going to be able to decrease the amount of the loan. Overall, the amount of the loan that's going to increase is going to be that $2.2 million. And again, that significant amount is because of the $3 million change in the 31-700 that's now being split into two funds.
And you said those two were split, again, due to...
Sure. So the state has, and I'm, along with probably several other business managers in the state, very appreciative of the state making this change. Two-mill actually has two different distinct types of revenue. One is a reimbursable state match, and then the other is our local revenue that we receive from oil and gas, and then the two-mill ad valorem that we receive from property taxes. And so one is actually cash that we receive, and the other is a reimbursement. And because they are very two different types of revenue, the state has decided to split that fund into two funds. However, in doing that, what they've done is created a deficit where we've never had one before.
Okay. Okay. And I think you kind of mentioned that...
Yeah, it's, it's been kind of a blurb, so I've had it on the radar and made sure that we were prepared for the change.
Do we have any more questions?
I don't.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I saw move.
Motion by Mr. Hinneman.
Mr. Manini?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
And Mr. Mitchell?
That concludes our, what we needed to discuss for this, to reconvene. We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Manini.
Mr. Hinneman?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Okay, at this time, we'll call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance and New Mexico Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag, stating New Mexico, that is a symbol of perfect friendship among all united cultures.
Roll call.
Mr. Mitchell? Ms. Manuelito?
Here.
Mr. Manini?
President.
Mr. Hinneman?
Do we have an approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda items that are listed.
I have a question also, sir. I, I am not 100% sure, but I'm pretty 90% sure that we have not received or reviewed June 2nd meeting minutes, that we had a special meeting in Albuquerque. I looked through the last previous meetings, and I did not see the minutes to those. Could we have those checked and see where those June 2nd meeting minutes are?
And that was for the special meeting in Albuquerque?
Was it a work session?
It was a work session. What was the date?
June 2nd.
It should have been the June 6th meeting, and I don't have those minutes with me. I can check on them for you?
Yeah, I, I looked through my stuff too, and I could not find June 2nd meeting.
I can see where we approved June 6th and June 13th.
Yeah.
But we would approve that on June 6th, and I do not have that on hand. So I will have Joan go back and check for you to ensure it was done.
Okay, we'll have Joan check on the minutes from the June 2nd special meeting.
Mrs. Manuelito?
Yes.
And Mr. Mitchell?
I'm sorry, we're voting on the agenda?
Yes.
And I missed a step there, because I'd like to pull item 9, F and G.
9, F and G?
Yeah, they're consent items. I'd like to pull them for discussion and action on the land, donation of land, and the right of way.
So you'd like to change those to action?
Yes.
Discussion.
Right, and action.
Discussion only?
And action. F and G for action.
For action?
Yeah.
Discussion and action.
So we would like to change 9, F and G for discussion and action.
I remake the motion then to include those two items also in my motion. Mr. President?
So is that motion to pull those two items at this time until the next meeting for discussion and action then?
Pull them, pull them from the consent and make them action for this meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
So Mr. Manini made a motion to approve with the changes to 9, F and G to make them action.
Okay, so I have to roll call again? Okay. Mr. Hinneman?
Yes.
Will be the roll call with that? And Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
And Mr. Mitchell?
Next, we'll move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Where's that piece that we read? Titus had that.
Is it, sometimes it's on here too?
Yeah, it's not on there.
Nope, it's not on this one. Got those statements?
This is a little, we gotta change it. Open public forum. But your comments are limited.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to our public comment, where we will limit, limit you to five minutes unless extended by the board president. And at this time, we will also run to remind you that there will be no comments directed at personnel issues. Our first one will be Peter Romney from INTU.
This goes to the board member.
Yeah, just come up to the podium.
From what?
INTU, INTU.
Yes, I guess, I just, very brief comment to make that, that, yeah, I'm at Navajo Tech University in the electrical engineering program, and I'm, I just finished my second year there, so we're, we're sort of moving very firmly ahead with programs to dramatically increase the number of schoolchildren, you know, in this district that have access to computer science and to essentially other STEM-type disciplines that will lead them to careers, you know, in STEM, in the STEM fields. And, and so we, INTU wants to be a real strong member, you know, of the, of this community and, you know, and bringing those things together. And it's definitely a, should be a community effort, not just a, just a single, you know, kind of organization. So that's sort of our point. And I understand that, I guess, in the next meeting, we're to bring a sort of, bring a report of our, a document of our ideas. Is that the, that was the one question I had.
Dr. White, would you like to expand on the letter that you had sent to all the universities?
Thank you, Mrs. Chappetti, Mr. Mitchell, members of the board. I had emailed and contacted all the post-secondary schools that we work with, including INTU, UNM Gallup, NMSU, Western, so that they give a report as far, a written report at the next board meeting, as far as how many dual-credit students they have, how many credits they've earned, the amount of tuition that was waived, and the amount of textbooks. So we're asking for a written report, and then from there, if you could, if you have any specific questions, they can go from there. So that was the plan from last week, and I think it's only fair that if we allow one organization, the other organizations need to present their topics individually. Thank you.
Ms., Dr. White, you said dual-credit tuition, textbook waivers, and what else was it?
The number of students that were enrolled from, by high schools. That's all under dual-credit. I sent the email out last week, asking them for information by Wednesday, so those written reports can be in your board packets at the next, for the July 18th meeting.
Thank you.
And I would like to thank INTU for, they requested to have a meeting with administration. We had a very productive meeting, I think, a couple weeks ago. I don't know, I've slept since then. We had a very productive meeting, where we've talked about some of the programs, moving toward certificate and such, and expanding to possibly other schools. So I'd like to thank you all for, for coming in that day and having that meeting also.
Mr. President, I would also like to thank INTU. I attended the graduation at Seagai, this, in the end of this past year, and I was really amazed by the students. I think the, I, I want to, I want to say all of them, Frank, would you say, majority of them got up to get some kind of certificate with dual-credit from INTU. And thank you very much for offering our children the ability to earn credits while they're still in college. And it was a huge number of our seniors that graduated that already earned college credit. And as I mentioned before, as a, as a board member, when I attended the UNM graduation, to see middle college having kids graduate with their high school diploma and also an associate's degree, I think that's a goal we, we need to work for in our outer schools and within our school district. So thank you very much for that, INTU.
Our next one will be Casimir Ajibar? Was I close?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Casimir Ajibar. I'm from Navajo Technical University. I've been with the college now for about five years. I'm the dean of undergraduate studies. We've been running this dual-credit for about six years now, which has been very helpful and very successful for our students, to prepare them, to get them ready for the college. Every semester, we prepare a report to New Mexico Higher Ed, which we submit on their website, with the number of students, number of classes they are taking from our college, and their grades as well. So we prepare this report every semester and submit to New Mexico Higher Ed in Santa Fe. So I learned that the board wants us to submit a report as well. We can retrieve that report, we've been submitting to New Mexico Higher Ed every semester. And the students have been very excited for this program, giving them this opportunity. They're not paying for it, so it's like tuition-free for them, so they can get even certificate level before they graduate from the high schools. I didn't get this opportunity when I was in college, but I'm very grateful that our students have this opportunity now to get these college credits and prepare them for a college readiness. Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you.
The next one will be Salanta Sunshine Jim Martin.
Good evening, board members and superintendent and audience. I'm here as a parent and a community member. I wanted to speak this evening, first, to extend appreciation and recognition to Titus Nez, who is, has announced his resignation from the Board of Education. I do believe that we do owe Titus Nez recognition and appreciation for his service to his community as a school board member, and I do think that he helped really guide our school board into a good direction with his leadership. So that's the first thing I'd like to share. Secondly, I'd like to speak on replacing our new school board member. I would like to ask the school board to do this in a transparent way, so that parents and community members from that district of Crown Point, Seagai, and that surrounding community can have a voice to be a part of hearing about who their new school board candidates are. And I also think it would be more appropriate to have those community members and those who are candidates for this replacement share this in their own community, either in Crown Point or Seagai, where we can hear directly from the people, the parents, and the grassroots community members. I, as you know, have been coming here often to advocate for our rural schools, our county schools. That includes Tohachi, Navajo, Crown Point, Seagai, Thiru, Reima, and all the other schools that are not in the city of Gallup. And I share that because this new replacement for a school board is so critical to that advocacy. We do need to have people from those communities who can help speak up for the rural county schools, as well as for the whole Gallup McKinley County School District, which I'd like to remind you is more than 85% Native American. You know, I am outspoken about Indian education and the importance to our school district. I do want to remind our school board members that back in 2011 and 2012, I was a part of a class action lawsuit, lawsuit against the Gallup McKinley County School District due to the closure of three of our rural schools that was being attempted, and where three of former board members and past board members voted to close those schools down and consolidate them. From that, we brought in the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission, so that we could have our voices heard as Native American voters, and so that our redistricting lines could be fair and equitable to Native American voters and our Native American students. So board members, I implore you to keep this in mind as we make these decisions for our replacement for our district board member, keeping in mind transportation issues out in the rural communities, keeping in mind that support services are very limited in our county schools. There's not access to a lot of stores and sponsors like you can get here in the city schools. So we need a lot of support out there. I would like to bring to your attention that there is an uprising, and also border town violence. And you'll, you'll hear in the news of such things happening in Holbrook, Winslow, and surrounding border towns. And we really want to help connect what is happening in our communities and what many of our Native American people are facing. So I'd like to just ask that you really consider this in your replacement, and as you elect new officers this evening, we need people who can speak up for all those who don't have a voice and keep our superintendent accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments. At this time, we will move on to election of board officers per board policy, 11.2.5 We'll start with electing our Board of Education president. The floor is now open for nominations.
Mr. President, or Acting Superintendent, Acting President, I nominate Kevin Mitchell as our president-elect.
I will decline that, and I would like to make a motion. I would like to nominate Priscilla Manuelito.
Mr. Mitchell, I'll go ahead and accept the nomination.
If I don't have any more nominations, can we have, have roll call for vote? If I don't have any more nominations, can we have, uh, have roll call for vote?
Mr. Heniman?
Yes.
Mr. Menini?
Mr. Mitchell, I'm very disappointed in you declining. I think you're doing a good job as vice president. I think you should step up to the plate. But I consider your views. I do not know. So, I'll go along with yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
For reasons that I have, um, pertain into other business that I do attend, I, is the reason why, um, I don't think I would be able to give the time that is needed to be president at this time. Um, therefore, um, I vote yes for Priscilla Manulito.
You made the motion, so she would have to vote.
Oh, Priscilla, okay, Priscilla needs to vote, I guess.
She still votes too? I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, um, Priscilla Manulito will be our new president for the Gallup-Mckinley County School Board. Um, you want to take over now?
Enter the Gallup.
Thank you very much, we're board members here, um, for voting for me in favor of this position. Um, I will do my best. As you know, the last time, um, I was acting president, I really do appreciate the help that I received from my former, um, board members here that assisted me with that. And I would continue to request the same. And with the Gallup School District, this is something that, um, it's a learning experience, and I, I really wish Kevin would have said yes, because I'm nervous and right now. But I, I think thank you very much, Kevin. Um, and I think that together, we can continue to make this Gallup School District shine and continue to have, um, to work hard for our children and keep them first. So, again, and we'll continue on, um, with the next position of our board. I will now open it up, um, and accept nominations for vice president.
Madam President, I move that we elect, uh, Mr. Lynn Heniman for vice president, if he'll accept the position.
Mr. Heniman, do you accept the position?
I'm not sure of our procedure in this. Can we have more than one nominee?
Yes.
Okay, then I will, uh, except being in the group, but I would like to nominate Mr. Kevin Mitchell. He's very experienced at being vice president, and he's filled in when he'd be up in there.
Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell, do you accept the nomination of Mr. Heniman?
Um, yes, I do. Um, so I guess we'll start with, um, um, roll call for Mr. Heniman.
Mr. Heniman?
Your job.
What Kevin said, kidding. We'll go ahead and start with, um, voting for Mr. Heniman. Roll call.
Mr. Heniman?
No.
Mr. Menini?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
With the votes presented, Kevin Mitchell, oh, I'm sorry, we would now like to do a roll call for Mr. Mitchell.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Heniman?
Yes.
Mr. Menini?
Abstain.
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. We now have Mr. Mitchell as our vice president. We'll move on to board secretary position. I will now open it up for nominations.
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
I would like to go ahead and nominate, um, Mr. Heniman for board secretary.
Mr. Heniman, do you accept the nomination?
I will.
Thank you, sir.
I move nomination cease.
We'll go ahead and go into roll call.
Mr. Heniman?
Yes.
Mr. Menini?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. We have now Mr. Lynn Heniman as the board secretary. Thank you very much. Moving on with the agenda, we have number four, approval of minutes. We have June twentieth, two thousand and sixteen.
I need a correction on June twentieth.
Yes, sir.
On the last page of J, it says our emergency fund is only two thousand five hundred dollars. I think that's two million five hundred thousand dollars. A few zeros are missing in that item, Madam President.
Important zeros.
Very important zeros. Thank you for that, Mr. Menini. Any other corrections?
I have none, but I don't, if there's no other questions, I move that the minutes of that June twentieth minutes be approved with that correction.
Thank you, Mr. Menini. With no other questions, we'll go ahead and go to roll call.
Mr. Heniman?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
B, we have June twenty eighth special meeting.
I'm a little confused, uh, Madam President. Was that the night when the lights went out?
No, that was, um...
Was it just twentieth?
This was just our, this was our special meeting. The night the lights went out was the one you made the correction to.
We just reviewed the...
Okay, the twentieth?
Yes.
Thank you.
The vacancy position.
The vacancy position.
Any motions, John?
President, I will approve the minutes of June twenty eighth.
Motion made by Mr. Heniman to approve the minutes on June twenty eighth. Can I please have roll call?
Mr. Menini?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Moving on to five, approval of consent agenda items, seven E, nine F, nine G.
Madam President, we have pulled nine F and nine G. The only action item is, is seven E, and I make a motion that the current bills be paid.
Thank you, Mr. Menini, for that correction. Roll call on the consent item agenda, which is only seven E.
Mr. Heniman?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
And Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
So, board members, um, Frank, if you could help me on this, do we go ahead and discuss that now at nine F and nine G?
No, when it comes up.
When it comes up, okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Um, going into number six, study circle report. The first one we have is number one, superintendent report.
Thank you, Miss President, Madam President, Miss President. Uh, Terry Fraser is going to do a couple of presentations on recognition. Mr. Heniman, if you would like to join her, I think this was done at your request, so if you'd like to join her to pass out the certificates, I think that would be nicer.
Good evening, newly elected board members, board president, vice president, and secretary. Uh, we do have a few recognitions tonight. Uh, one was a request by Mr. Heniman to recognize the Gallup, the Gallup, uh, concert ensemble. That's what they're called. And so, I'd like to call up, um, Ryan Hernandez. Is Ryan here? Hi, Ryan. Ryan is the leader of this group, and he's graciously asked some of his members to come join in, join him with this presentation. So, Ryan, here you are.
Mr. Heniman, did you want to...
If Mr. Heniman and Mr. Hernandez would like to say something, you can do that at this time.
Good evening, uh, honorable, uh, members of the board, Mr. Chappetti, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, just before I call on my, uh, my, uh, group mates, actually, I, I'm not the member of the group. We all work together as a group, so there's no leader. I'm, I'm not the leader. I'm just the one who instigated it, but, um, it's all a group effort. Uh, our group is called the Gallup Music Teachers Ensemble. Eight teachers, seven teachers are here from, uh, from, uh, Gallup-Mckinley County Schools. One teacher is from Winderock Unified School District. And our advocacy is to, um, to bring about the betterment, to, to, to bring growth and, uh, and, uh, positive, and to, to improve fine arts, specifically music here in Gallup and the neighboring areas. We also invited several teachers in the, uh, in the community, which are not inside the Gallup-Mckinley County School. But fortunately, we, we still have eight music teachers who are on board. And one is retired, but still, she still counts. And, uh, here are the members who are of our group who are present at this, uh, this summer, who are not out of town. Um, Victoria McNamy, she's the, she's the band teacher of Chief Manulito and, and Gallupi. And Denise Weber, uh, just retired last year. Uh, she used to be the teacher, music teacher at Cheetah Elementary. And, uh, the others are absent, but still, I would like to, uh, mention their names. Sharon Wilkins, uh, music teacher at, uh, Gallup Mid. Vern Baya, who is by profession a music teacher, but jumped ship to, to administration. Felicia Sanchez, band teacher of Kennedy, Mid, and, uh, Miami High School. Emmanuel Alunyo, band teacher of Winderock High School. And Lynn Foster, by profession, uh, music teacher, but is now teaching at Washington Elementary, uh, teaching kindergarten. Thank you so much for this recognition.
Ensemble members, if you would come shake the board members' hands, please.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Members of the board? I want to make a follow-up comment here about something. Um, when we educate kids, there are values involved. And there are words in English, good and evil and beauty. And there are words in Navajo, words hojol, hochol, nijol. And we also know that life is full of both of those dimensions, the good and the bad. And sometimes, we think music and the arts are just about superficial beauty, entertainment, and they have that. But I want to just make a, try to make a point here, whether you agree with me or not. Looking at this last week's paper, a headline that says Devil Driver Drives Winderock Fans Wild. And we have a phenomenon in our society, and we might put it under the, under the arts or not, called death metal music. Heavy metal music often expresses anger. I know some heavy metal musicians that I think are fine people. And when I talk with them, I know some, they're good parents and everything else, but their music expressing some frustration and some anger. But when you look at some of these groups that are brought in, that our youth and our chapters even will bring in at times, and you look at their websites, and you find obscenities right on their websites, and that's acceptable to them. So, like for this group, for example, Devil Driver, they use that name because they thought it, the leader thought it sounded evil, and the term suits his life. And the logo is the Cross of Confusion. That's their logo. So, they question everything. And what I'm saying is, there's a music out there that glorifies death and blood and confusion and ugliness even. Some of their images are skulls and snakes and so on. But our music teachers are trying for something higher. They're trying for something that brings color and life and clarity and order and balance and taste and even beauty. So, I want to recognize them, because I think they're up against it with kids nowadays in terms of what other kinds of music and other kinds of entertainment is out there. And they're trying to build something that we can call hojol and good and beautiful. And I really thank you, teachers, for what you've done. And I want to say that Ryan says he's just the instigator, but he's, we have a lot of talent, and we, our music teachers are talented, but he's the one that brought this group together several years ago to do concerts, programs. He's done, I don't know how many now, four or more, three. And, um, also, uh, brought to, uh, from UNM, one of the faculty, music faculty over there to do a training, made it available for the other music teachers. And so, I just really respect, appreciate his initiative in these ways within the music group. So, thank you, Ryan, and thank you, ensemble members.
Ms. Manulito, oh, I just want to say thank you to our musicians and just keep up the good work. And, um, I wish I would have attended your, um, your performance that you put on. And I would like, also like to thank Mr. Heniman, um, to bring in this, um... And I would like, also like to thank Mr. Heneman to bring in this, to our attention, the good that you are doing within our district, thank you.
Board members and Superintendent Chappetti, this concludes the recognitions for tonight, thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Manini?
And one more item. Hello? She wants back the microphone.
Board, if I may retract here, I didn't know that we had a representative from the Navajo Nation Vice President's office. I wasn't notified of that today, but we're glad he's here. I'd like to present a plaque to the Vice President of the Navajo Nation for his efforts in attending many of our schools this past school year, speaking on the subject of prevention of suicide. I understand, well, I tended one, and it's very moving. He really has a way of capturing the students' interest, and we are very thankful for him doing that for us. So this goes to Vice President Jonathan Nez. Tonight, we have Rick Abaster, who is one of his staff assistants here to accept this for him. Would you like to say any words, sir?
Well, thank you, esteemed board members, superintendent, audience. Vice President Nez apologizes that he could not be here this evening. We had constituents that passed recently in Holbrook a few days ago after a court settlement, so he's out there with President Begay, meeting with the family this evening. And I just want to say thank you very much, and I will take this back to him.
Madam President and Superintendent, it's official now, we'll go on.
I would, Mr. Manini, go ahead.
We have four plaques to present to our, uh, community members who helped us in the past. They have been presented to us, and I'd like to have them presented as soon as possible. Terry? Whenever they can come. You'll have to invite Mr. or Dr. Tempest to come, or you can present it to him at the next school board meeting over there. Therefore, the others need to be called upon to be presented these certificates or plaques.
With that, could we add recognition at that time, and see if anybody can get hold of Mr. Nez and have him attend the meeting for recognition? Okay.
At the next school board meeting?
If, if it gets here in time. We'll wait until we got it in hand before we invited him.
Oh, okay.
I hate doing the invite and then saying, oh, by the way, we'll get it to you.
Okay, okay. Will you let us know when that receives, sir? Thank you. Lynn, did you have anything else? I thought I saw your hand. Did you want to comment? I wasn't sure if you had your hand, no?
I'll go ahead and say a couple of things also. Thank you to individuals that came for the, the music. I think that's, that's one thing that I really helped my daughter when we were in Tharoo, when we lost our band a few years ago, and they fought back and made public comments here to the board before I became a board member. She wasn't in band, but her friends were, and they saw that, how precious it was to them, so she really advocated very strongly for them. And I know the representative for the Navajo Nation left, but, you know, this is something I really appreciate him doing, and I, I told him that personally. But, you know, that's my, that's my, my main job is working with our youth on suicide prevention in our area. So I'm very thankful for the initiative of building the communities and providing hope to our, to our children again. So I can add to the administration at Navajo Nation for that.
We'll go ahead and move forward now, thank you very much.
I, I'll get it.
School site?
No, it's still superintendent's report. We have a group in, we were approached, Mr. Triplehorn was approached. I don't know. Prior to your long stay in Afghanistan. We have some, an opportunity to start bringing solar to our schools, solar power. Luckily, through the federal tax incentives, we've asked the group to come in and speak a short presentation to you. So before we start doing anything permanent to the buildings, it will need board approval. So this is more just an informational piece on, on what we're looking at and how we're moving. So, Mr. Triplehorn?
Madam Board President, members of the board, Mr. Chappetti, thank you. So this group that approached me back in November timeframe, it's basically a partnership between an investor, and what they do is they install solar panel arrays, basically photovoltaic, or whatever other option we decide to go with, at our school sites. And we go into a third-party agreement where we basically buy the electricity from them at a set rate. So Oswaldo is the person that reached out to me to begin with, and he's standing back here, he's going to do his presentation. So I'm going to let him talk about that a little bit more, because he does it a little bit better justice than I do, and then we'll stand for questions.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, school board, good afternoon, superintendent, good afternoon, members of the community. My name is Oswaldo, and yes, I was doing some business in Afghanistan, and I'm back again. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you about solar energy and schools. As you see, solar is not new. The technology keeps improving every day, but we see some solar tracking systems, some ground mounting, some roof mounting technologies. What we don't see as much is schools. Well, the Department of Energy now has approximately 3,752 school districts participating in solar energy. That is a very large number. 2.7 million students are now taking advantage of solar energy. There will be a total savings to the schools eventually of $77 million. That is incredible numbers. The schools were difficult to participate in the past, because it was an investment for the schools. But lately, thanks to investment tax credit from private companies, now you can share some of the tax liability with a private company to do investments. And now we see a very large number of schools participating, and at that same time, saving energy. The main things with the schools is we reduce gas, the green gas gases. We can teach the kids what clean energy is all about. We have a tool for education. We can provide the students from a very early age about clean energy, solar energy, and actually, all different levels of energy. And the way it works is by a third-party participation. The financing is done through a tax equity, and you see so many schools now around the, the US participating in this. San Diego Schools Districts, Arizona School Districts. Forty districts in Arizona are using now a tool to finance schools through a third-party participation, they call it PPA. There are, some states are now participating in this program, but New Mexico happens to be one of them. And the way it works is the entity who financed the solar project takes advantage of the tax liability the IRS provides it. That is actually 30% of a total investment. So if you and I go to buy a solar project, will cost us 100%. But in this particular case, IRS is allowing one-third to be used by the investor. The school takes advantage of that, the less cost of the energy. The remaining of the energy is paid by the school, by the energy that produces. The utility also takes advantage of something we call a credit, is renewable energy credit. Every time the solar energy produces electricity, also produces a credit. And the utilities are mandated to purchase this credit. That is a second way to finance these projects. The cost to the schools, zero. It will be 100% savings at the end of 20 years. So the solar installation, today, we're seeing installations that are over 35 years and 40 years, and still producing electricity. Well, anything above 20 years, in this particular case, it will be 100% savings to the district. And that becomes millions of dollars in, in savings to the school. If you participate in the cost of energy today through a solar project, you will see at the end, you no longer pay for the cost of the electricity. However, if you purchase the utility from a utility, the same amount is always growing. Well, from the year 20 to year 30, in this particular case, you would save millions of dollars, because you are not paying any cost of energy. And yet, you will own the entire infrastructure of the solar energy. This shows by year 10 or 12, the cost of the electricity is now creating an equity and the investment by the third party. If you buy the utility from, the cost from the utility, you never see any money, it always goes down. So our main goal is to ask you to participate in the solar projects, which companies who have a tax appetite can offer you and pay for it. We have one local company in New Mexico who wants to invest their tax money and help develop the school project for your district. We thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Oswaldo. And so, one of the things that I, and I know this question's going to come up, so I'm just going to answer it right now, is Gallup High's solar project. Oswaldo, when he was out here the last time that we met, actually went by and looked at that solar array. And his engineer friend that's with him, they went out after we met and looked at that array. And the problem with that array at Gallup High School is that the motors that they use to track the sun were grossly undersized. And so that's why that tracking array does not work, okay? Oswaldo has come to us with some possible solutions, where we just fix them, and they just track east to west. Or, you know, and that would be, of course, at our cost that we could do that, but we could generate some electricity from that. But the full-on azimuth up and down and all that stuff, tracking the sun, those motors are not capable of that, okay? So lessons learned. So one of the things that Oswaldo alluded to was, after 20 years, we will own these systems. We will, we're going to try and get as many as we can put in while the tax credit is available, and I think that's till 2019, correct, Oswaldo? So we want to start out with two schools. One being an in-town school, and one being out in the county school. So we're, we're looking at, right now, we're looking at doing Myamura High School. And the reason we chose Myamura High School is because that school already is kind of a green building, it's got geothermal heating. We can essentially take that building off of the grid. The only thing we're going to be buying is water for that building. The other school that we're looking at doing is David Skeet, south of town, it's got adequate property for these systems to go in. So those are the two that we're going to start out, that we'd like to start out with this year, with, with the board's blessing to pursue this a little bit further. One of the things that he also alluded to is, we'll lock our rate in on our electricity. So if we pay, and I'm just going to use simple math, I don't know if this is the case or not. If we pay Gallup Joint Utilities, or Crump, or Continental Divide Electric, 12 cents a kilowatt hour, we're going to lock that price in at a penny below that, right, Oswaldo? 11 cents a kilowatt hour, and that's what it'll be for the next 20 years, okay? The utility is always going to raise their rates. So at the end of the 20 years, that system becomes ours. In the meantime, Oswaldo's investor wants to keep making money on this, this, or make money off the project, so he's going to maintain those through the contract. We won't be like Gallup High, where we're trying to figure out what's going on with it now, you know, seven years after it was installed. So it's, it's, it's a great opportunity, and these investors came to us. It's a large company, it's a security company here, here, based out of New Mexico. I've met the investor, or the investors, and, and it's, it's, it's great for us, it's great for them. We could never afford to do this on our own, never. Any questions?
Board members?
Just, what other schools in the state are using this?
Okay, um, thank you. The investor has approximately $4.5 million every year of tax liability that he can use. We chose two schools, Gallup Schools and Bernaleo Schools. After those two schools are in, in the making, we will go to additional. He cannot invest in more schools, because we feel the youth school and there, and Bernaleo will take all that tax money that he has.
Gallup School, and I'm sorry?
Bernaleo School District.
Bernaleo?
Yes.
There, there are other schools that have done this through other investors. Cleveland High School has a large solar array. Was it Artesia, I believe has a large array. There, there are several other schools in, in the state of New Mexico that, that do have large solar arrays.
Mr. Manini?
Madam President, I'd like to have the superintendent pull up an, an action item for our next school board meeting concerning this item, and therefore, we can vote on it. I believe this is a very favorable outcome for Myamura and David Skeet. They are right there, I think they have the land, and they also have, they, they need the power. So thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you very much for the time.
Excuse me, sir, I have some questions. Okay. We hear the problems that we're having at Gallup High with what's going on with the engine, or what was it he called it, motor?
Truck motors, yes.
The motor. What happens if we need repairs on these solar panels in the future?
Thank you. The beautiful thing is you don't own the hardware. And the investor, if it doesn't work, he's not getting his money back. So he will have 100% operation all times to capture his revenue back. If he does not, you don't lose any money, because you're only buying the energy, and he loses the entire investment. So for that, we will select tier-one technology. To us means the highest technology in the market for installation, so the investor can be protected, and the school district can be protected.
Thank you.
And additionally, Madam President, the, the... And additionally, Madam President, the, the, the investor is going to, to make sure that these work, because when they're not working, he's not making money. We'll still be connected to the local utility, so if for some reason the whole solar array goes down and we're not generating any electricity, we'll be getting electricity from the utility. But this is a rather large, it's gonna be a rather large installment for Myamura. It's gonna basically take up all of our property on the, on the west side of the Arroyo, which is just to the north of the golf course. So it's not gonna be a small system like Gallup High's. This is gonna be a one-megawatt plant. So it'll be more than enough electricity to power that building. And they're gonna be separate, you know, there're gonna be several rows of these things. So the, the possibility of the whole system going down at once, very, very minute. One of the rows of arrays going down, possible if a motor goes out. But then, the investor's gonna get someone out here to fix it right away.
One more thing, please. Each system will have a monitor in which we will track from home base. However, you will have a monitor here in administration, and everybody can see the energy produced by sun and the energy consumption by the sun and the savings you are getting every minute and every day of every single day of the year for the rest of the twenty years. So you will have monitoring, and every member of the community can come and see it, how much energy is produced in that day, how much energy has been savings that day, and what will be the peak or non-peak time for you.
The other question I have would probably be for Javana. Javana, do we have the funds for this project and where would the money be coming from?
This, this project will not cost a penny. And, and one of the things about this is, you know, Gallup High, you know, I, I just cringe every time I drive past there and see those things pointing at the ground. That was a one-time grant, okay? And, and so we got no support after that grant was gone. Okay? And to be quite honest, the district doesn't even really have it within their budget to replace all the motors on that system right now. This is gonna be a continual support for the next twenty years at zero cost to the district. They're gonna come in, they're gonna put in the system, they're gonna tie it into the building, they're gonna put in all the meters, everything, zero dollars to the district.
And, and let me add, it's not a zero cost to the district, it's actually a savings to the district because we are getting that one cent per therm or kilowatt hour, however they figure electricity. We are getting that cost savings at one cent now. And of course, if Public Regulation Commission ever allows them to raise their rates, like they've been asking to, their rates go up by ten percent, ours stays at eleven cents. So we start off with a penny per kilowatt or whatever hour savings, and over the next twenty years, we, we might even save more.
I have one more question, sir. What other green schools do we have in our district to consider these projects at?
So some of the other schools that we have geothermal heating systems at, Madam President, we have one at Theroux Mid-School. So that's, that's one of our projects for, for next year. We also have Navajo Mid-School that has geothermal heating. We have Gallup Mid-School that has geothermal heating. And we have Rama Elementary coming online in November that will have geothermal, or ground source heat pumps is what they're actually called, but we call it geothermal. So those, those are our future projects that we'd like to do. We'd also, I'd, I'd also like to possibly look at Crown Point Mid-High as a possible, because we could, we could get two schools off of the grid, basically electrically, because we have both the schools on the same campus.
So why weren't those other schools considered this year first?
We, we could, we could do more than two. I don't know what the investors... We could expand it beyond two. We wanted, we didn't wanna start gangbusters with this because we went gangbusters with Gallup High and we all know how that ended. So, so we're, we're, we're doing it.
Some of the rationale behind the thoughts, Myamura is the largest building in the district, so therefore one of the largest consumers. So looking to get it on and you get your larger savings right away. And then, when they approached and said, well, there's potential for more money, we looked at one of the smaller schools to go with it. So we picked the, the large school for the bang for the buck and then picked a county school that had the area of land. And, and another one factor that we put in was the level of damage and vandalism that we've been getting. And, and David Skeet has been very solid in the community with very little vandalism. So that's another reason we chose it before we get to having more of the security systems and such on our campuses.
And, and one of, one of the driving factors as well with, with ground source heat pumps or geothermal systems, you know, we saw huge savings in gas costs at, at Myamura when that building came online. But our electric cost for that building went through the roof because that whole system is, is run by electricity. So that's one of the reasons we chose that school first.
Thank you. Mr. Manini, you had a question?
Yes, Mr. Triplehorn, and I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry. But can Central Office Student Support Services pick you back on Myamura since we're so close?
We possibly could. That's something we could talk about with the investor.
That's, I recommend that also.
If we have the, the land available back there to increase the array a little bit bigger, we possibly could do that. Yes, sir.
Mr. Hideman?
Madam President, first of all, I wanna say that I certainly support the development of solar. Thirty-five years ago, I directed a teacher training workshop funded by the Department of Education, the Department of Energy on energy education, including solar and hot water, batch heaters and those kinds of things. So I'm, I'm in favor of the concept. It is my understanding that you, Ron and you and the gentleman, I think, met with Gallup Solar and they have some concerns, they would, I, I would, I would like to know in our process what they're thinking is, they're the most committed local group I think we have that continues to support solar for all of us in our community. And I'd like, I'd like opportunity to hear from them next meeting if we consider this. And also, I'd like to know who the investors are, portfolios, I'd like to know who we're dealing with, not somebody unseen, behind the scenes. And I, then, because I'd like to come to some understanding of why this, or this set of investors versus others, because there are others out there. But in terms of going solar, that's not an issue to me.
Right. Mr. Hideman, one of, one of the reasons why this investor, I was sitting at my desk one day and they called me. I didn't solicit a vendor. One of the things that the Gallup Solar helped the city of Gallup with, with their solar array that's getting ready to be installed from Munoz Overpass to Allison Crossing, was they were, the city was, was soliciting vendors. They wanted someone to come in. So Gallup Solar helped them develop their RFP to bring in investors. We did not approach any investors. This, this just fell in my lap one day. So that's the reason why this investor. I'm sure at some point we can set up a meeting with the investors, with the board, and, and that's, that's not a problem.
Well, if I may be simple-minded, if a vacuum sweeper, cleaner, a vacuum cleaner salesman shows up at my door and falls into my lap, am I gonna buy that one without necessarily looking at their other brands? I don't think that's the justification for using a given vendor just because he's seeking the business. He might be the best investor or set of investors, I don't mean he, I don't think he's, this gentleman's the investor, maybe he's, maybe he's the go-between. You know, might, might be the best choice. I, I just wanna...
And, and, and one of the things, Mr. Hideman, is the investor is just the investor. He doesn't, Oswaldo and the school district, Oswaldo's company and the school district will actually work on selecting the equipment. We're gonna make sure that we get the most bang for our buck, which is zero of the investors' money. And, and Gallup Solar wants, and Mr. Chpeti and Oswaldo and myself met with Gallup Solar a few weeks back, and, and, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily know that we need to search for other vendor or other investors, because we have an investor that's willing to invest money into Gallup right now. And it's not, you know, it's not a drug lord from Mexico, or, it's a, it's a company, a New Mexico-based company that has a lot of tax credits that they wanna spend. It's, it's a security company, okay?
And that's good. I'm just saying, and I don't mean this impersonal, it's just an easy way to say it, you have expertise that I don't have in your field. Gallup Solar has expertise that I don't have, and I'd like to draw that in for our awareness and consideration and then, and still go forward considering this. I, I agree with putting it on the agenda so we can look at it.
And so one of the things that I would like to actually involve Gallup Solar with is the actual selection of the, of the equipment that we're going to be purchasing with this. The, the most, you know, we're gonna, like Oswaldo said, we're gonna use a tier-one, which is the best equipment you can buy. We're not gonna use a tier-three or tier-four stuff. And I want Gallup Solar involved in that, in that process from the beginning, because this is our first solar project. And like you said, Gallup Solar knows more about it than I do.
We'll also need Gallup Solar's help to approach the city. They have to rewrite, right now they allow so much per the community to be done by solar, and, and we will have to raise that threshold. And Gallup Solar did commit to helping us with the city also. They just had to raise it for the city themselves to, to, those of you that don't know, the city's putting in a large array west of Munoz Overpass between the Perky and I-40, Rio Perco and I-40, so.
Mr. Hideman, any more questions? Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, I think if we're gonna put this on the agenda for the next meeting, I think we need to have everything in writing and everything that we need to study and be ready for the presentation, be ready with our questions, amounts, dollar-wise, anything we can get from Gallup Solar that could give us, you know, the education that we might need to be able to make this decision.
I agree with Mr. Mitchell also, but just take it a step back also, is Gallup Solar the only company that we're gonna ask for the assistance, or there are other solar companies?
Gallup Solar is nonprofit. It's just an organization that, that tries to get solar awareness going.
They're promoting, they're promoting green energy in the Gallup area. So it's not just solar, it's, they're promoting green energy.
Wind, solar. So no, we will, we will definitely, through this, through the process, and we're at the very beginning of this process, but we would like to kind of start speeding up the process a little bit, because we do only have till 2019 to take advantage of these credits unless the Fed extends these credits out past 2019, but they've already done that because they were supposed to expire this year. So, you know, if we have an inventor, an investor that wants to spend four point five million dollars a year on solar in Gallup...
His company, Oswaldo's company.
Okay.
Gallup Solar is just, will, will give us recommendations based on their experience of helping the city with solar and that kinda stuff.
Okay.
We don't wanna settle for equipment like was purchased for Gallup High.
And, and what, and what Gallup Solar did for the city was solicit investors. And, and that's what Gallup Solar wants us to do, is to go out to RFP for investors. We don't need to because we have an investor, and we can set up a meeting. If you guys want to meet the investor, we can do that.
It's just somebody who wants to protect his money. If Uncle Sam's taking almost five million dollars every year...
And he says if those five million dollars he can invest in the school and get fifty percent of that money back, he is in heaven. And because IRS laws is allowing the clean energy to be used tax money, he gains, we gain, and you gain. So it has to be somebody who pays lots of taxes to take advantage of this, of this, of this concept. Thank God we have a very unique New Mexico company who says, I don't wanna take my money and do an investment in California, I wanna help New Mexico. And we said, please, let us find the customers who wanna take advantage of your money, then make their money, and we take advantage of their tax liability or our technologies.
So board members, do you wanna add this to the agenda for discussion with an action item or just discussion?
All, all action items are discussed beforehand.
Okay.
Only, only time you need a discussion item, a meeting prior, is if you're changing policy. And then you'd have just a discussion and then the next meeting in action. So in parliamentary procedure, your action items, you discuss it before you vote.
Discussion then vote.
I think at this time, you know, you're having questions with the schooling, I think, I don't know if we would have discussion on, on whether the solar energy would be a good idea and then go on to deciding what schools. I don't, I don't know how we would do that.
Or how many?
Or how many.
Okay.
So could we do...
Depends on how much money we get, how far that goes.
Oh, I think we could ask that with the investor at that time?
And I think it can be there as an action item, which means to me it's a potential action item, because we don't know what specific proposal might be ready in, in two weeks from the administration in terms of going ahead in a concrete fashion in terms of some of the decisions, but I think we can set it up that way and be ready.
If, if possible, I would hold off on the action item would be my recommendation. Allow us to continue pursuing the talks with the city, to look at getting that raised, working with Oswaldo's company to see exactly what, what is, how much it's gonna cost to outfit these schools, et cetera. And then we can actually bring back to you stating the company's willing to give X amount of money. That X amount of money will go X far, and, and possibly build in a couple scenarios, the large school with however many smaller schools that the money goes, or just X number of schools with this money. And bring several scenarios to you with the equipment and, and of course with Gallup Solar's input. And, and then we can bring it to you as a package stating, we have X amount of money, this is the packages we'd like to offer, either subset A schools, subset B schools, subset ski schools, and the potential savings, et cetera. And then you can make an educated decision on which package to go, and, and we don't need the action item until it's actually time for them to spend money to, to start putting it in.
Yes, I think we need discussion, we need to see full proposals and go from there.
So really just a blessing to keep, keep moving forward. We wanted to bring that to you at this point, because if it's something you're not interested in, we don't wanna waste Oswaldo's time, our time pushing forward, getting all this with, if the answer's gonna be no. So really just a blessing today to, to continue moving, not a, not a vote, just a run with it type thing, and then we'll be keeping you updates as we go and then coming to you with a, a formal action once everything is really polished and ready to go.
No question. Mr. Hideman?
Go ahead. Go ahead, sir. One, one of the things that I, that I would like to focus on in my list would be all the schools that have geothermal systems, as well as Crown Point Mid-High School. So that basically covers almost the entire county, a school in each kind of area. Tohachi, that might be a possibility as well. So if you guys have any, any schools that you really want us to focus on, shoot me an email or send Mr. Chpeti an email and we'll, with Oswaldo's team, we'll, we'll look and see what we can get done this year. And if we don't get it done this year, there's always next year, because he's got tax credits every year that he has to use, so.
Okay, that was my next question. Is there, is there a timeframe on this that we need, I mean, I mean, that we need to, I mean, to make a decision, otherwise, I mean, they need to know where they need, they need to go elsewhere, or, you know, that's what I'm, what would we need?
So we would like to put shovels in the ground, probably...
We must, we must have a system, at least ten percent in operation.
We must have a system, ten percent in operation this year to claim their tax money for this year. So, and that takes approximately four months of planning back and forth, so soon is the better, so that we can take advantage of this year's money from them.
So we need a, a formal vote by September?
Yes, around that time, yes. And then, of course, once we get through this, this year, this calendar year, January 1, the clock resets, we can start planning the next schools. And we have till 2019 to get as many schools as we can possibly get done with the investors' money.
Madam President? Yes, Mr. Hittimer?
I, I just want to reiterate my thinking that I'd like to see Gallup Solar giving us what information and perspective they can as soon as possible, not, um, I mean, the job to research this is not the board's job, that's Ron's job and, and so on, but I think the sooner we know what we're looking for and trying to pay attention to, the, the more understanding we can be about this and, um, maybe if Gallup Solar comes and tells us what they, and it's not that they're gonna tell us what to do, I mean, that's not their role either, but educate us and then maybe we need them involved at several point. I just don't want to go down the road and then we're saying, "Well, Gallup's gonna help, Gallup Solar's gonna help us with choice of equipment." I don't think that's the part that interests me. It's, it's, it's these other questions and sort those out from the beginning and then we can go along the road together without competition.
And I, and I actually have a letter from Mr. Bill Bright that I can share with the board, I'll, I'll forward it to Mr. Chappetti and, and we can share that with the board, um, kind of outlining what they would like to see their participation in this project being. There's a few things that I disagree with because they want me to go out, they want the district to go out to RFP for a vendor, or for an investor. I don't think we need to waste our time doing that because if we do that, you're talking another two months added onto the project. There's no way we could get any of this money done this year if we solicit additional, uh, investors. We can do that for next year, though. We could, we could still work with this investor and maybe solicit some additional investors and see if we can get more schools done.
Those are exactly the kind of questions we need to sort out, I think, as we go along.
Any other questions? Thank you, Board Members.
Thank you, Oswaldo.
Thank you.
Um, now we have Dr. White and Dr. White. Uh, you all asked for an update on the STEP grant. Dr. Kelvin White from DODI is here, um, been working very closely with our Dr. White, give an update on the STEP grant that you asked for.
Thank you, Mr. Chappetti, Madam President, Board Members. Dr. Kelvin White's not here, but Roy is here, Roy Tracy from the STEP program. He's given overview of what the STEP grant has been done in the past and where we're at in the whole process.
Thank you, Dr. White. Good evening. Board members, Madam President, Ms. Manley. My name is Roy Tracy. I'm the Program Editor, Statistician, Demographer for the Office of Educational Research and Statistics under Indian Education with the Navajo Nation. I, uh, want to say thank you for your invitation, uh, for a, a brief insight about what STEP has accomplished this year. And, um, I'll try to be as brief as possible. This, I gave you a handout and that's an extensive report, but I just want to give you a, a quick insight about, uh, the State Tribal Education Partnership Grant. Uh, this was awarded to the Navajo Nation back in 2012. We've had about three years to start pulling data and create some activity, partnership development and things of such to study the, uh, low disparities that are happening with Navajo student learning across, uh, uh, two school districts, and that's Central Consolidated School District and Gallup McKinley County Schools. And there were some good things that came out of this. Um, if you look at the exact end of summary, uh, the, the two focuses that STEP looked at was to promote that increased collaboration between tribal education agencies and build the capacity of these tribal education agencies. And that, for this particular incident in this grant, was really to focus with two Gallup School Districts, public school assessments and research and such. Out of this, we had some accomplishments and part of that was, uh, uh, working data agreement with the state of New Mexico and also with two LEAs, local education agencies, again, Central and Gallup as well. In this process, um, uh, aside from those two memorandum of agreements and understanding, we've had access to a huge plethora of data from Gallup McKinley and Central Consolidated School District. In the research department, uh, we had access over, to over 71,000, um, student files, Navajo student files in those three years from the state of New Mexico. Uh, and this was primarily assessing and looking at the NIMSBA testing, the state criterion, uh, criterion testing, or we call them high-stake testing that's required by the federal government. We, um, looked at over 32,000 Navajo student files, uh, that were primarily focused within these two school districts in Central and Gallup. Part of our research still continues as we try to close that report out for the federal agency, Department of Education and the Office of Indian Education. Uh, we're looking at low academic achievement issues and we've had a hypothesis, and that was primarily due to acculturation issues that our students are experiencing at the, at the rural schools that they attend and dropout rates having a huge effect on math and English criterion testing. And it also pointed, uh, uh, in a roundabout way to teachers, teacher quality development, professional development that's taking place in two school districts. So the Navajo Nation is still continuing to look, uh, at these two issues and because these unique memorandum of agreements that STEP, that pretty much was tested between Gallup and Central and pub, the Public Education Department, this opened the door for the Navajo Nation to have access to Arizona and Utah as well, those data files. So that was some of the good things that came out of the research center. In the parent involvement, we had a number of successful conferences and coordinating professional development training for Navajo culture and language. And we worked with Gallup McKinley County Schools and there were a number of positive outcomes highlighting parental involvement on academic achievement, helping parents understand what's happening in the classrooms and the dynamics between administration, collaboration, and in-classroom, both academic and non-academic achievements. We had professional development, um, areas that we also had to look at. And then primarily, uh, DODI focused on, um, Gallup McKinley County Schools. We had a total of 40 educational assistants that were identified with the help of Dr. White here, participate in professional development training provided by Western New Mexico University. And those EAs, educational assistants, who attended Western New Mexico earned two credit hours for spring 2015. And they attended a three-weekend course designed to strengthen and encourage them to work obtaining their degrees in education. By utilizing these concepts that were born within this program, a train, the trainer concept, uh, was, a model was used to facilitate four days of training to 37 educational assistants as well. There were a mixture of, uh, 46 certified and five non-certified teachers that, um, were, um, they, they participated from Central. And there were specific areas that we focused on. For example, you'll see new approaches to STEM math and literacy. So the whole idea was to help teachers, uh, build insight about particular programs that were gonna strengthen the STEM field, for example, which were really focused on math and English criterion testing. We also looked at, um, research conferences that opened the door not only to community members but parents as well as administrators and teachers as well, uh, local universities as, as well, uh, that provided an insight about the process of what criterion testing is, grade level testing or short-cycle assessments that we use, and helping them understand and build accountability at the community level and also at the parent level. So these were some of the accomplishments in, in a, in a real brief manner. Uh, they had some real good outcomes. It opened the eyes for the Navajo Nation to really look at what was happening within the public school sector of education and trying to pinpoint, uh, low academic achievement, um, outcomes from our Navajo students. We have the ability to look at some of these systemic changes that need to happen. A part of that was collaboration and understanding how much collaboration is really happening between entities and the amount of funding that's available for that to make, uh, I guess in someplace you could say, in my feeling, um, uh, progression doesn't go anywhere without funding. Uh, you can have all the, uh, great scientists in the world, but if there's no funding, then, you know, you, you won't find an answer, some people might allude to. We had a number of challenges and although we had partnership and memorandum, uh, agreements existing, there were still problems accessing data. There was a number of issues with SERPA compliance and the system's security, but those, uh, were also addressed and, and, and looked at. Uh, the Navajo Nation, this helped the Navajo Nation progress, um, to build internal systems and such to support, uh, the privacy aspects of evaluating Navajo students. We're not in the business of comparing Navajo students to their peers, non-native peers. We're about the business of looking at Navajo students' performance achievement. And it's entail that it really boils down to classroom, classroom and parent accountability, the type of, uh, teacher development and professional development programs, teacher quality training programs, what's really happening and the interaction between the student and the teacher. We have long-term sustainment needs. Uh, as, as we learned about this process, the tribe's never done this with public schools before. Uh, the tribe has 66 schools, uh, 34 grant schools, as we call tribally, locally tribally-controlled schools, and 32 BIE schools. As you might have heard in the news, DODI, uh, Department of Indian Education, is assuming the remaining 32 schools for a total, total of 66 schools that we will be, um, managing. The goal of, uh, DODI is to move in the status, similar status and act as a component of a state education agency. In that process, we're looking at five, four areas that we learned from the STEP program. Uh, one is closing the achievement gap, two's rental involvement, three, Indian culture and language, and data collection and analysis. These were the key four main components that came out of the STEP program. In conclusion, uh, STEP has served over 7100, uh, 7,149 students in 25 public schools, and this is primarily for Gallup McKinley County. 333 teachers, 471 parents. Uh, there was approximately about $135,000 spent on parental development, professional development, uh, programs. And while this laid, um, a successful foundation, as we saw, because this has never been done, systems and mod, models and modeling concepts have been tested, um, we found that, uh, there needs to be a little bit more push to establish and maintain this momentum that's been moving. And so, some of the future focal points, um, the Navajo Nation is looking at is ensuring Navajo intellectual assets are engaged and major strategic public schools initiative and support for Navajo researchers in taking leadership roles is needed. So that capacity to, to, to have access to researchers and helping public schools develop. Uh, this includes not just a public school, but grant schools as well for, internally for the Navajo Nation. Uh, we're also looking for program facilitation, uh, to support the data access and research of, uh, public school data. Um, we also look at further development of the STEP program, uh, which is really helping Arizona and New Mexico and Utah provide assistance to the Navajo Nation. We also like to see new and emerging research platforms. This has opened the door for the Navajo Nation to really look at what's really happening within the public schools, not only within itself with the grant schools and, and, and BIE schools. We also found in the collaboration piece, a strong leadership representation of platforms that develop within these local education agencies and the collaboration with other state personnel and school district partners, which has not really been tested and that, we'd like to access that as well. So there are a number of areas that we wanted to focus on and as you read further down, it'll give you a pretty good idea and more, talking more about systemic issues there. If you look at your exhibits in the back in Exhibit A on page eight of page nine, you'll see some outcomes here with the parental involvement conferences that took place within the, uh, two school districts, Central Consolidated, which is Shiprock, New Mexico, for some people that don't know where Central Consolidated School District is. Gallup McKinley County School District as well, and you'll see the breakdown and the type of expenditures that took place. So for the parental and professional development program costs ran about 18, 18,000. On page 10, you'll see, uh, the Western New Mexico University expenditure for four individuals, for example, that graduated from this particular course. The STEP technical assistance classes totaled about, uh, 21,000 and there was approximately about 24,000 that was spent on that. For the research conferences and cultural infusion, infusion conferences, there's about 88,000 spent on that as well, for a total of about 132,000. So with, with STEP, we have some, uh, research publications coming out and we're looking at that. We're still going through the process, uh, for publication and proper citation usage, uh, for the areas that we've looked at. And this is a comparison about, um, Navajo Nation or Navajo student performance between those students that live on the reservation and those students that live off the reservation. And we found, for example, and I allude to this and sometimes in our presentations, that we found that most of Navajo students that attend schools off the reservation, uh, outside McKinley County and some of the predominantly boarding schools of the Navajo Nation, uh, those Navajo students perform, um, about 32% higher on their criterion testing in math and English. Uh, we looked further into that. We found that their median income is, uh, middle-income parents that come from married households, um, they have a, a wealth of support systems within those public school districts, which is unusual because Gallup McKinley County gets quite a bit of money in the pot, but some of these school districts that we compared them to don't have that much. So we looked at professional development and teacher quality training programs. Uh, they had, uh, a, a resource of, uh, training programs and partnerships with local universities in Socorro, uh, Belen, some of these other areas. So we, we assume that that's also helping the teacher quality development that's taking We found an unusual process between Gallup McKinley County students and the math department in the criterion assessment that our students performed better than their off-reservation peers in the lower-level grade math, but at the higher level, there seems to be a regression through regression analysis and correlational analysis that we find that these students are dropping off, and we found that back to dropout rates and such. And these rates were attended, uh, um, sifted and, and presented from the New Mexico PED database, so that's how we assess that. We're still, uh, closing out the research process. Uh, the STEP program this year for the Navajo Nation is in its final year. It's called a no-cost extension year. We had, uh, indirect cost savings identified, uh, for the Navajo Nation. Unfortunately, we couldn't, we carried that over, can't return that, so the Navajo Nation has accessed that. That's the one that, uh, through the federal process, uh, needed approval because it was an indirect cost rate that was not, uh, allowed. So the Navajo Nation applied for a no-cost extension and we got that no-cost extension. So this last year is totally... So this last year is totally sustained by the Navajo Nation. We do appreciate Gallup McKinley and, uh, Superintendent Chappetti for assisting the STEP program in the past two years in the data collection and opening the doors with a plethora of data that we really didn't need, but we got, and it helped us do a little bit more studying, particularly on Gallup McKinley County versus Central. If you look at the last, uh, page twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, that will give you an idea, and this is a proposed budget. We did have a sit-down meeting with, uh, Superintendent Chappetti and his staff to talk about the sustainability requirements that's required in the grant between, uh, the SEA, the LEA, and the Navajo Nation, TEA. And so this is a proposed budget, uh, that Dr. Lewis is advocating, and this is the project sustainment. We'd like to see the STEP program, uh, live its life out, being, uh, brought into the Navajo Nation system, and that's what we're advocating for from our side with the Navajo Nation budget process this year. So, uh, we're looking to pick up additional positions. Uh, we did sit down with, uh, again Superintendent Chappetti, uh, to see what Gallup can do. Uh, CCSD has donated ten thousand to this project sustainability, and so we're here, and of course in the sit-down meeting about two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, uh, we wanted to see what Gallup McKinley County would help us with. And so Dr. Lewis and on behalf of the board members would like to have a specific meeting with the Gallup Board and the superintendent, with our superintendent of the Navajo Nation to discuss this possible merger, uh, partnership to sustain the STEP program further. And in that, uh, there's, uh, we're pretty excited to show some of the statistics specifically, which is another long process of, uh, analogy and presentation interpreting that data. And I think at these work sessions, we could possibly do that together as well, too. So, um, unfortunately, Dr. White, uh, Dr. Lewis could not be here this evening, and, um, I wanted to present this in a brief process, it won't take too long, and, uh, I'm open for questions if you have any.
Board members, Mr. Heneman?
Thank you for that report. I, I think this is potentially very important and helpful, and I say potentially just because this is everything but the data. You've given us a couple of examples, which answered part of my question in terms of what kind of data were you actually collecting, uh, and you gave the example of the criterion reference test from, and, uh, students who are attending off-res and so on. Who has all that data and how do we get it? Because I think these are the clues we're looking for in, in shaping and, you know, developing our own district, and that's what it's for. I don't, I, I guess, just go on a little longer so you can correct me than in the present. The grant is ended essentially as far as continued collection of data, is that correct for now?
No, we can still, we, we're still carrying that, that process out in the agreement. We still have access, um, Superintendent Chappetti has opened the doors still, uh, but after further, uh, discussion and looking at the data, we feel that, uh, there might be some issues that we might have to look at specifically, primarily linking, uh, factorial analysis studies between teacher development and, uh, student performance in the classroom. And primarily, we focused on an area, we're doing an acculturation study right now, um, looking at the students and the teachers that are not clearly from this region, uh, that are coming into this region, maybe on a teacher, uh, Teach for America, uh, exchange or, uh, some, some programs similar to that. But we found that, um, this data might, we might have to do a little bit digging further. But the modeling and the testing, we've developed, uh, factorial analysis, correlational analysis, regression analysis, and those are primarily the focus that we're looking at. So the data is housed at the Navajo Nation, um, because we're looking at the validity process right now, we're closing out the, um, the model, the hypothesis process, and we've tested that. Now that we're sampling particular data with maybe three thousand students in some cases, six thousand and one between the two school districts, it was about fifteen hundred, we're looking at verifying that data. We, we have certain members of New Mexico PED helping us as well as, as well as outside consultants. So that data, uh, is housed with the Navajo Nation. Uh, once we release the publication, that's, that will be the outcome of that.
Yeah, 'cause I'm interested in the data, but I'm interested in what kind of data, you know, because there are all kinds of questions and some certain fundamental things we get from the state, some limited one. But I'm just curious because, if I may deviate a second, for example, some years ago, there was a very interesting study with Navajo students, it was interesting to me anyway, on health complaints to school nurses. And it turned out when they sort of labeled categorized kids as more traditional, more acculturated, it wasn't either the more acculturated kids or the more traditional kids who had the most health complaints. It was the one from either identity in a setting that was the other. So in other words, they were less comfortable or, you know, adapted to the setting they were in. So if you were living in a real traditional community, but you were sort of come in as a more acculturated student, they had more health complaints and vice versa. So just thinking of that even academically, what kind of background combinations kids bring and families bring and how that might even correlate with an effective academic achievement, and, uh, and then the same thing with mixes with types of teacher backgrounds and all that. I mean, there's so many questions, I'd really like to know what you looked at, you know?
Yes, it's very interesting because, uh, because we had, what, seventy-one thousand a student act, uh, demographic data, and finding the descriptors to really identify or pinpoint what we wanted to model. We're primarily looking at the criterion testing or high-stakes testing performance, but then, you know, the backside is what leads up to that. So we need more access to grade-level testing or short-cycle assessments, and then particularly moving into those courses or classes that align with math and English. So it could be literacy or something of that nature. Our findings, uh, for example, in trying to close a gap analysis or, or gap separation there, is primarily looking at students in, in one test that we modeled, which was done back, uh, back in the nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-eight, uh, I think the last one they conducted at Rough Rock was about nineteen eighty-seven. This particular model showed that nineteen ninety-two as well, I believe, that those students, Navajo students, that had a better understanding of language and culture, meaning they were a little bit more fluent or fluent in Navajo and they're, and more knowledgeable about the culture, performed better at high-stakes testing. And so from the DNA content standards, we felt that if we could build up a Navajo student's DNA character, uh, which is, A, some of those concepts that come in, that if, if a student has better under, understanding of their identity and who they are, that they perform, they would perform better in the classroom. Not just that, but it also has to incorporate some of the DNA content standards within student learning outcomes that are built in and taught by teachers that are thoroughly trained. And so we work closely with the DNA culture language, uh, Office of Standards and Accountability Development with Dr. Anseeta Benali's office, and they're creating a current assessment, um, a module, uh, which is called ODLA, a language assessment, but they've trained, uh, turned that around into an assessment and a curriculum piece that, uh, we hope that will be picked up from the New Mexico PED side and incorporated for those Navajo Nation schools or those schools that are bordering the Navajo Nation. So these are some of the exciting outcomes, but it, it's, it all depends on collaboration. We've got to have the collaboration and the agreement set in stone, it has to be funded, and so that's part of the process there.
And one follow-up if I may. Um, has there been any attempt or any inclusion of data post-secondary, you had data in terms of the same kind of demographics and follow-up of what kid, how kids do after they got out of high school, and a attempt to link with colleges and universities to get that data in your?
As part of the modeling concepts for future studies, unfortunately, right now, we, we were just concentrating on the past three years. We did do some sampling and we're working on a process right now, an agreement with, uh, the two universities, Navo Technical University and DNA College and that process. I believe that's going to be pitched this coming year, just around fall, so we'll see how that, uh, yeah, it's going to be a sampling. We, you know, we'd love to have all the data, uh, from all the universities within New Mexico, Arizona, and Utah. Unfortunately, uh, these agreements were particularly for K through twelve data access, and that, that's really where it's held at now. So learning about new models that are happening out there and testing procedures that are taking place gives, you know, helped us kind of paint the picture for the future assessment. We'd love to see that data as well, too.
First of all, I want to thank you very much, sir, for your presentation. I and Dr. Tempest, the former board member of this school district, attended the first STEP grant meetings out in Winderock and continued that for some times, and I'm glad you are pursuing this, uh, to the endeavor of, of continuing it. So thank you very much for your presentation also.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Um, yeah, I think the study is, and all the data is from two thousand thirteen through two thousand sixteen, right?
Two thousand fifty. Uh, two thousand twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen. Unfortunately, it'll pinpoint the NMSBA, uh, performance. Uh, we are preparing for the PARC assessments, in which the Navajo Nation has a new movement towards the accountability workbook process, and that's going to be assessing this first year performance that took place of the PARC assessment. So we're using that same testing model and bringing it across to New Mexico PEDs and they're assisting us with that PARC assessment. We're having a presentation on July twenty-second. If you're interested, if you would like to come out to Winderock, we'd be happy to host you, and that's where PED will sit down with us and give us the reasoning and logic, the modeling process, and how this all was put together with New Mexico as far as identifying their performance ranges.
Um, do you have a time for that date?
Uh, that's going to be nine to twelve o'clock, July twenty-second. It will happen at the Department of Digital Education Sunrise Conference Room upstairs on the north side in Winderock, Arizona.
I have a couple of questions, um, sir. Thank you very much. I can't hear you. Reporting, I can't hear you. Um, the one thing that, I remember there was a young gentleman that came to us during one of our IEC meetings when I was a member of the Indian Education Committee meeting, and I think he came to one meeting and then he never came again. And do you know about our Indian Education Committee meeting with, that we have our parents?
Uh, we know about them, um, but...
Okay. If, if you could continue to collaborate, um, your efforts with our parents on the Indian Education Committee, I think that will be essential to your, um, to this partnership also. Uh, the other question I had, um, one thing that we, that I would really like to, and I continue to strongly encourage our district to do is, um, uh, grow our own, and I see that that's one thing in your STEP grant that you've done in the past, where you've helped our educational assistants, um, towards their educational degrees. And I think that's very essential because right now, it, it's hard to find those kind of resources to help our teachers that are working, our native teachers that are working towards those degrees, and, um, I don't know if, if that is built, again, in this, but I think, um, um, we need to continue to provide those kind of resources to our teachers. And I know that when, um, Dr. White reported, Ms., Mrs. Paletta White reported, there were like five, um, educational assistants from our district that, um, took that opportunity. Uh, and I was wondering if, the other question, on your Exhibit A, um, under the STEP grant, um, assistant class, continue, um, it says Gallup McKinley County Educational Assistant Two, Two, and Two, so is that Four or Six, I'm sorry, that was from our district? What, what's the Two, Four, I guess is what I'm saying?
Oh, yes. That was the, uh, technical assistant courses for those, uh, for two individuals.
And then...
Six.
To, to that time period, right?
Right.
And then to that, so together there would be how many? Two, three?
Uh, total, uh, there were six participants and four graduated.
Okay.
There were, I think there was like, uh, yeah, six started, four completed. There was, uh...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
The whole process behind this, I think, was really trying to, one of, one of the collaboration, uh, processes allowed us to access, uh, teacher quality development and such within both school districts. We found that, uh, both school districts were utilizing a high percentage of educational assistants in their classrooms. And we found out what's going on with this, and we, uh, did a little survey and got to talking with some teachers, and we found out that a lot of those teachers, I think this was reported at the last, uh, meeting this past December, was these teachers, despite graduating from a university with a degree in teaching and, or specialty, had problems testing out at the state level for their certification. A number of them were found to be, uh, taking this test ten, twelve times, and that's a lot of money for them. And so somehow these teachers within the school districts retained and used in the classrooms. So that was one area that we had to look at and primarily, uh, was an interesting challenge to understand what was happening within the school districts. So, um, that's, that's one outcome, one finding that we had as well, too. Which really alluded to growing your own concept, understanding how can we recruit teachers or take these educational assistants and utilize them. What we found was a trend that most teachers that were classified as Level Two and Level Three teachers, masters level, once they reached that, they're pulled. They're pulled into administration, they're pulled into technical training, they're pulled into other aspects of administration. We found very little of the twenty-five school districts that we studied, there were only three master teachers that were actually in the classroom, for example.
Wow. Thank you very much, sir. Any other question, board members? Thank you for your report.
Okay, thank you.
I can't.
Uh, so shall I, uh, return my good news? The board will meet with our board and the superintendents in a joint meeting?
I, I, I myself am interested in attending.
Okay.
Oh, shoot, wait.
We will, we will contact Superintendent Chappetti on that, um, coordination.
Mr. Tracy, have you heard anything from the PED?
I'm sorry?
Have you heard anything on the PED from participation?
No.
From the Public Education Department?
Uh, from PED, uh, we haven't heard much from them. They sort of, uh, kind of pulled away and understandably, uh, they're working on other initiatives. We're still enacting the memorandum of agreement. We've asked for assistance as well to sustain the program. That was one of the, uh, activ- activities and primarily, uh, grant activities that's required to, you know, the federal officer would like to see, uh, from the PED side. We did talk in our meeting, uh, about accessing other resources, uh, from the PED process, uh, PED side, so that's still yet to be determined, so...
Reason I'm asking, in our budget meeting, the, the Public Education Department did ask us, should they continue pursuing this? Because if we're not interested, they're going to back out totally, and we told them, no, we're getting valuable data, we've got a great partnership, we got great training going on, we're, we're excited to continue it, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping they continue.
Here's something we found within this, uh, Public Education Department. Um, despite the, the data that we received, we found that that data didn't really, um, was, was, was not so much questionable, but the process of, uh, the way PED evaluates, um, Navajo student performance... much questionable, but the process of the way Peds evaluates Navajo student performance, it's not really a high priority to the state. You hear a lot about the Hispanic movement and the development and funding of these programs, but we kind of questioned what was happening with the Navajo, you know, primarily for this area, Native American funding initiatives from the Peds level. But we found some anomalies within the data that comes from Peds. We had to have some of their teams come out and help us align that data with what we pulled or what they gave to us, so we had to, you know, the STEP program really is testing the system. What's really happening out there is the process of reporting, as it's supposed to be in the Stars Manual, for example, really happening between the school district and Peds, and how's Peds using that data and assessing and analyzing Navajo student performance, for example, and how's that data coming back out to schools? How's it coming back out to parents, for example, so?
Short one?
Yes.
I just want, when is this to be published? You mentioned publishing it.
The grant ends on September 30th. Depending on, we're going through our first review of the validity testing and modeling approval. Once it passes, I believe we should be out for publishing in either late August or September. We're trying to beat the grant deadline of September 30th, so we can have something back to the federal officer. And one of the big things that she's pushing is the sustainability aspects of, you know, the three partners sustaining this grant.
May I add something, Madam President?
Sure.
If you look at Exhibit B, starting on page one, we had already met with Dr. White, Mr. Tracy here, Evelyn and Begay, on the proposal that they had given to us, to our school district, and we went through and said that we can, we are already doing a lot of these. For example, on page 13, Professional Development Training, it's asking to select 50 teachers and educational assistants from 14 schools located on the reservation and 21 off. We do have a training program that we're looking at from Title II to not only train the schools located on the reservation, those are called, identified as STEP schools. They are located on the Navajo reservation, so therefore, in this particular grant, it was primarily targeting those schools and nothing else. So, we have expanded that as far as teacher training for not just those schools, but all schools, and some of the things that they're asking for, for example, mileage, we do have mileage that are already built into our system. Parent involvement trainings, we have identified certain parental activities, and that's on page 14. Staff travel is basically asking if we can fund a Navajo Nation employee for training. So, we've got some things to talk through, because I don't think our district can allow a non-employee to be using district funds for training, but we can, you know, do different things. So, we have already discussed a lot of these, and we already said that there's a lot of in-kind services, so we're already working well in advance of this proposal that they have. And we, you know, if they want to come back to that, that's totally fine, that's totally okay. So, like I said, it's, we already went through the first round of discussions on their proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, it's usually a standalone, but the JOM report?
Thank you for allowing me to do a monthly report on behalf of the IEC. My name is Monica Yaizy. I'm a parent and also the JOM president. We recently had a negotiations meeting, I indicated June 9th. Before this, we had worked on our application for about a month and a half before this, before our application was to be submitted. During that time, something happened within the administration, and our application was not to be found. So, one of our administrators had to redo the application again. And I was given an email from Navajo Nation that our application was submitted with many errors. During our negotiations, we went through all, the whole entire application, and we had to meet again to resolve the errors. Now, we submitted the application, we had to still make some slight changes and some information that still needed to be submitted. In the past, we've really never had problems, but now, I hope things will go smoothly, since we have an appointed coordinator, Ms. Carmen Moffett. I'm pretty sure things will be streamlined. But at this point in time, I was informed that BI E will come and make a monitoring visit. I have concerns during this monitoring visit, and, but right now, there was a lot of other issues that I have, and one of them is our funding. I was informed that we should have spent all our funding that was allocated to JOM, but apparently, I was given information by Navajo Nation that there's a possibility that there's more than about $100,000 that has not been spent by JOM. That's going to be a big concern of mine during this monitoring visit by BI E. Also, counselor position. We have a counselor position that's going to, that's being advertised, and we're just waiting to be part of the interview committee, and who is all going to be part of that. JOM's going to be providing 100% on one of the traditional counselors. At that point in time, I was informed that an Indian Education Coordinator will be supervising this counselor. I do request that whoever the coordinator would be that will supervise this counselor be giving us submitting monthly reports or attending our IEC meeting on a monthly basis. We're part also of the Title VII Indian Ed Committee, Parent Committee. We also support that, and we participate in that, and we also need reports from them as well. And that's a request I'm making. Otherwise, for the school year 1617, it was already upon us, roughly three weeks, we have to plan in that, things that need to be implemented for, to make up for this year. We're looking forward to getting back on track and making some major accomplishments concerning the education of our Indian children. We look forward to working with Ms. Moffett and the district as well as the school board to make this successful year for the Indian Education Committee. We did have a work session in June. I sent a request to Mr. Chappetti on some of the items that we were requesting since the beginning of the year. We got through that agenda halfway through. Mr. Chappetti did inform us that he will complete that agenda during our orientation, and we do have some other concerns as well that we still need to bring up with the budget, the business office. So, I hope they will make time and make effort to be there and not be in a rush to leave during that, during our orientation. That completes my meat report. Thank you.
Board members, questions?
Yes. I'll just make a comment reflecting, I think, what you reported to us. This past year was sort of a rough year. Put it mildly sometimes for IEC, and I see some optimism in your report during the coming year, and I hope we have a much smoother and stronger year, and people see some goals accomplished, so thank you for looking forward in your report, too.
I do request that, since Mr. Nez is no longer with us, that somebody from the board will still attend one of our meetings to keep the collaboration, because it seems as though that was the only thing that was keeping the, keeping us to collaborate with the district administration, to have a board member there, so that things are being followed through with, between us and the district.
I don't know who would like to answer this question for me, but with the $100,000 that's still, have you received a budget to where, oh, how can I, how can I say this? How those funds are not being spent, or if they were spent for sure, or?
Because of the turnovers, and because a lot of things were not being processed, that delayed a lot of requests, and our schools were, some of the schools, I, we got a lot of concerns about, they didn't want to use the funding because it was too much to retain. That was the reason why I wanted the work session to say, how can we make it a little bit more smoother and not discourage, don't let our teachers be discouraged to spend the money? Because we didn't have a coordinator that knew how to process things in a timely manner or have consultants, paperwork processed in a timely manner, a lot of our spending was out of, I believe, unrestricted funds or IDC, I'm not sure. So, a lot of our funding was covered by the district and not so much JOM because of their policy of having things being put in a timeline. We had to make sure quotes are being submitted with some of our things, and I don't know why some of our previous coordinators were not aware of all this. That's why those were questions that were raised. Was the OMB Super Circle shared with your coordinators that quotes had to be attached? Justification had to be attached to a lot of our spending, i.e., and that was one of the issues that were raised, because in the past, we could never get an answer from the business office. All we were told is, they're aware, they're aware. Well, if they're aware, then we shouldn't have had this problem. But because of the turnovers that we've had since the beginning of the year, that's why we have all that money that was not spent.
Could we try to get these monies carried over?
What's going to happen is, now, Navajo Nation is going to take whatever we didn't spend, put it in a pot, and all the contracts that are under Navajo Nation will be spread equally. We're not going to get that amount of money back, the what we're losing now. We'll probably get a third of it.
I'm pretty shocked here. You know what? It really bothers me that we were unable to spend this money. I mean, you know, we're always in an outcry, you know, for our children in our district needing money to purchase whatever they need to purchase, and we can't seem to be able to spend this money. I mean, I don't understand how this is happening. I, you know, you know, we've had people working with JOM and the department for years. I don't understand, you know, in this time and age, how we're still not able to be able to understand what needs to be turned in in order to get this money spent. $100,000 is a lot of money that our kids missed out on this past year, and, you know, and that's, and that bothers me, you know, so, and we're not getting this money back. So, I'd like to ask you, Monica, you know, what, what, what is your plan, or what is, what do you have for the future to make sure that this is not going to happen again? Are, you know, are we going to be, is the Navajo Nation going to cut our funding because we're not able to use what we're, I mean, it's like we're telling the Navajo Nation, you know, this is too much money for us, we can't spend it.
That's why, you know, it's like a cry for help since the beginning of the school year, and, you know, I wasn't really getting that support until now. And with your support, you know, I believe that we can try to accomplish and have a little carryover and not such a huge one like we did, we do have now. That's why we're trying to stay on top of what needs to be shared with our coordinator, what needs to be shared with our principals. So, we're trying to stay and involve as much as we can, so things will be processed and streamlined where we don't lose our funding. This is one of my concerns, my biggest concerns. What is BI E going to see, and our, who's going to be at fault? You know, that's not just the district, it's going to be on us, too. Did we follow through? Did we make sure? You know, they're going to come and monitor our program, and what does that look like on us? You know, we're selected to see how our program's being run. Where's our proficiency? I don't know. That report hasn't been given to us. Where are we at? You know, what are we trying to do? Where's the immersion program at? I don't know. I've asked that question. A lot of things that we're supposed to be doing for our Indian children. I'm hoping that with this collaboration that we're having with the district, with you supporting us, that we'll get this done this school year. I don't want to lose this program. I want to be here for our children. I will continue to advocate along with our group here. So, that's, that's all I can do right now.
So, to Superintendent, you know, this goes back to accountability here. We have our IEC, we have our coordinators, and then we have the people above our coordinators. You know, they're, they're just as much at fault for this, of us losing and not being able to use this $100,000. You know, I mean, you know, I think something needs to be done about that. I think that our people who oversee our coordinators should have been aware of this, they should have known what's going on, and they should have been there to support and help to ensure the spending of this money.
I think, Mr. Mitchell, I do not, I understand your question that you asked Monica on what her plans are, but my question is to Mr. Chappetti and to Javana and Mrs. White, what are you guys' plan to support this Indian education? You heard the outcries for several months now for technical assistance, for a variety of supports for them, and we know, the board knows what you've reported to us with our employees, our directors, our coordinators in the past, but that direction needs to change, and I think it needs to be talked about and discussed, and even if we have to make directives as a board. This is a valuable program. These are our parents. They're not just another program. It's not just something that we can toss to the side and forget about, or give it to the board to take it over. That's not the plan. We don't want that. This is our, our children's parents that's out crying to you guys again. Help them. So, I want to know your plans. How are you guys going to help Mrs. Moffett and our parents here? Again, I would like an answer from either as a group in writing, also, whatever you're going to state, state. going to state now. We want some accountability as what was hurt. This is... And I want a plan of how this is going to not be another way to bring our Indian education down. So, if you guys could offer your opinions, your collaboration, your assistance, your technical assistance. I know that there is a new policy on how to spend funding. There is different things that we... That Giovanna has been telling us about. I know that part. We know that part. But how is that going out to the parents?
I think... I also want to say, I think, you know, I mean, if this was in any other department, you know, we, like, you know, it's happened in transportation before and we came down hard on them. You know, in order to get these problems fixed, I honestly believe we need repriments. You know, these people need to know their jobs and they need to know that they need to get in there and assist when they need to. I mean, we have no business losing money in this district. We need every cent we can in order to help the children in this district. We have, you know, we should not be losing any money. It's not right and it's not fair to the children that we serve in this district.
We'll be happy to get you your plan in writing. No, Paulette and Carmen, I've already started discussing expectations and what we're doing and what training we've done and what our plan is for future training. So, we'll be happy to get that to you.
Thank you.
On another note, I don't know where 63,000 is either. I'm not sure where that's at. Last I... The last report Ms. White gave us was still at Navajo Nation, but see, that 63K was given to us in January, and I don't know why it was submitted late, too, as well.
Carmen, if you can check where that is at DODI? Get us a report. And then I will report that the reimbursements that Giovanna did and turned in, August through July through April, actually, have been reimbursed. And it's my understanding that, Carmen, you're working on April till end of fiscal year?
Mrs. Moffett, could I ask you some questions also, please?
I just want to ask how the last few weeks have been with our Indian education. Have you received a budget of how... On our... The Indian education funds? And that was my question, was the reimbursement, but that was answered. And also with the application for next year and the plans?
Absolutely. First of all, when I first came on board, one of the things that I went ahead and straight in did is the look over the purchase orders that were still open because there were invoices that were still, had not been turned in and were not closed. So, I made sure that all of the purchase orders were closed. And so, that has been completed. All the local, meaning all the central office purchase orders that were done at this level, we contacted all the vendors and requested invoices to be submitted. I worked with Janelle to make sure so... So far, to my understanding, all of the purchase orders at the central office level have been closed. It's very difficult to have access to the school site purchase orders, and I know to my understanding from the information that I received from Ms. Paulette White was that every school is responsible for their JOM purchase orders and making sure that they're closed and also that principals had received training on how to make sure that the purchase orders were closed. So, in terms of the school site levels for JOM allocations, I'm not too sure where that is at this moment, but I can say at the central office that I've closed all of the purchase orders. The budget reimbursement report for JOM, I looked at Giovanna's previous reports that she has done, and I figured it out just by looking at the reports. I wanted to look at them month through month to kind of see how they were being done. And I pretty much figured it out. I did a draft, sent it to her, came back with some feedback, and finalized some little touches to it, and then sent it back again to her, which is... She's going to hopefully sign before the end of the week so we can submit it to Navajo Nation. So, that would be my first completed budget reimbursement report. I feel very confident about that report I did unless there's additional, you know, minor things that would need to be adjusted to the report. So, we have one more report to close, and that is for the month of June. We're looking usually about the 10th month after the June month closes. It would be around July 10th or 11th, right around there, about a week into the month where we get a final report of all the expenditures of what has been paid for, and then we'll start working on the report for June. By that time, we will have a better picture of what the ending balance is for Johnson O'Malley. And in terms of the $63,000 that was mentioned earlier, I will follow up with Navajo Nation regarding where that went. But to my understanding, the allocation was given, it was during the time that I remember I was here interim. I remember working with Ms. Johnson and Paulette White on doing a budget journal entry to put in the money into the district, to have it into our eye visions. From there on, I don't know where that went, but to my understanding from IEC members, it was never approved by the Board of Education. We had already the award letter in our hands, we just don't know what happened in terms of the budget journal entry that had to be submitted for the board to approve and finally into our system so that the funds can be expended. So, there's some information there that we don't have, so hopefully I can do some research and give you a better picture at the next board meeting regarding that. Our board members are here. We have newly elected board members. Monica Yasi was elected as a new president again. Brenda Chicharillo is our new vice president, and our new secretary is Ruby Haley. I am communicating with them on a weekly basis, just giving them updates on where we're at in terms of expenditures, situations, questions that I'm getting. So, my goal for me is I would like to stay in touch with them weekly or bi-weekly to give them an update on what's going on with the program and so forth. You know, just recently, we have a new Indian education coordinator who was just recently hired and started on July 1st. Of course, our Indian Education Committee members are very interested in terms of where my role is and where's my role in relationship to the new Indian education coordinator. So, we're going to hopefully, you know, as we gather more information, present more information to the Indian education and be as transparent as possible.
Giovanna? Question, Giovanna. When we're talking purchase orders here, is there an actual deadline that, I mean, that needs to be met?
Absolutely.
And when is that deadline?
So, we actually sent all those deadlines out to program managers, coordinators, principals a couple of times this year, starting in the spring. And what actually has to happen is because our funding authority ends June 30th. Now, this is a unique program that it doesn't allow automatic carryover like our cash-based budgets. So, our funding authority ends June 30th. That means that everything that we're going to do has to be received and paid by June 30th. So, when you look at those kind of timelines, what's essential in ensuring that budget is spent is planning and making sure that you do kind of that long-term planning of, you know, this is what's going to be done and expected in this month, and then making sure that all of that is followed up on and followed through. The other thing that we kind of run into with the Johnson O'Malley program is after the fact of purchase orders, we're saying maybe somebody has committed funds on behalf of the district without receiving a purchase order. Once that happens with federal funding, you can no longer use that federal funding, it has to be relocated to the general fund. Unfortunately, business office usually learns about that when we get an invoice with no purchase order.
Okay. So, with that, then, you know, I would like to maybe ask for an update of all our programs and all our divisions, business, transportation, everything, to see if everybody... If make sure... I would like to know, you know, how many of our other departments spent their money and how much of the other departments that were having to send back money?
Sure. So, you know, when you look at different funding sources, let's see, transportation, for example, that's a state fund, and it has specific statutes that surround it. So, that's basically the cash that we have at the end of the year. Fifty percent of that cash will revert. Idea B is a federal flow through, it has the 27 months, and we actually have as much carryover now as we do in current year allocations. So, we are at the current of reversion possible.
Giovanna, can you talk in the mic?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, it's kind of different based upon what the funding source is, and then we have other funding sources. So, Carl Perkins, it sounds like Johnson O'Malley is going the way that Carl Perkins did at the state level where they have the 27 months. Johnson O'Malley is a federal direct fund, so the Navajo Nation has 27 months with those funds. But in order to prevent reversion at the federal level, they're going to do a redistribution. And Carl Perkins does the same thing in the state of New Mexico where the first year you get your first 12 months of allocation, and then anything that you have budget in excess reverts back to the state and they do a redistribution application. And I know that when I was talking to Alice Dodson, that she was talking that the nation was looking at going in that direction. And again, it's because them as the primary grantee, they will be reverting if they don't spend overall. So, when they look at Johnson O'Malley overall to all of the sub-grantees they give to, if they don't spend what they got 27 months ago, it's going to start reverting at that level. So, it doesn't really surprise me that they're going to a redistribution method for themselves just overall to ensure that they're not reverting money to the federal government.
Thank you.
So, I wanted to add, one of the questions that you asked to be able to respond to it is what is the plan for this year? Here's my plan for this year. I'm already working on the award letters for the principals. We have 11-month principals that are returning in a few weeks. I already know by the components that we submitted to the Navajo Nation, more likely 99.9% that plan will be approved by the Navajo Nation. So, we are anticipating that the plan will be approved. We already know the allocation that schools will be receiving for supplies, field trips, and consultants, and so forth. So, what I'm doing right now is I'm drafting a letter to the principals regarding their projected amounts of how much they're being allocated, what the funding line is for, what the purpose of the expenditure, and that I'm going to make myself accessible to them to work with them in developing their Johnson O'Malley educational school site plan for that specific funding. So, we don't have to wait until school begins, until kids are in the classrooms. Principals are going to be in the buildings pretty soon, at least most of them, middle school assistant principals and elementary principals are going to be here soon. They need to have the information right as soon so they can start thinking about how they're going to use the funding early in the school year. Another thing is that, is to start giving... Working closely with principals and giving them ideas on how to use the funding at their school site and more collaboration, communication with principals. I think from seeing in the past, perhaps that that's the missing component right there, is communicating closely, sitting with principals. This is not just in the principal meeting because you could only give so much information, but it's different when you sit with a person one-on-one. It's different when you sit with them side by side. It's different when you allow them an opportunity for them to ask questions and bounce ideas and just be able to talk instead of a large group. So, I would like to make myself accessible to the principals as soon as they come on contract, to be able to have, start the conversation regarding the JOM, their JOM plan and their projected allocation. And I think if we have a head start and we plan early, we can have a better use of our funds that would be more efficient and more effective for this school year.
You'll get your board communications this week. Part of it is the administrators conference that we have each year. We do have on the breakout sessions, so you're not presenting to full groups. You're presenting to smaller groups, and we do have the JOM and parental involvement in with those small groups. So, I would hold your award letters so you can give it to them face to face and then having that open dialogue like you're talking about. So, instead of mailing it out and then taking a thousand questions, then coming to the training and redoing it, should hold off and do it the one good time.
And I would like to thank you for that just because I think that that communication needs to be worked on because I think we've heard when we're addressing the whole principals, I think that, you know, they have so many things on their minds that, you know, with JOM, I think having that one-on-one would be very helpful. And especially the ideas, I think that will be beneficial to the principals also. Thank you, Mrs. Moffett, for answering my questions. I have another question, but I know, Mrs. White, if you could collaborate on this part, with the Indian education coordinator that was hired, and because I've been getting some questions on that also. Can you explain their role again and how that is... Make the collaboration between our Indian Education Committee and the Indian Education Coordinator? Because I know one time you said they're going to be specifically just overseeing the culture teachers. I'm not going to put words... You tell me. Because I remember you told me once, but I don't want to mix them up again.
Thank you, Madam President. The role of the Indian Education Coordinator will be to oversee Title VII and the Navajo Language and Culture Program. Part of the Navajo Language and Culture Program involves overseeing five coaches, if we can get them all hired, and then overseeing the traditional counselors that's being advertised right now. So, there's a total of seven that are going to be housed from the central office. And then they... And those folks will be working directly with the NLC teachers who are located in the schools. And Title VII supports majority of the salaries, and we have a professional development piece that's tied to that. So, Ms. Livers, who is the new Indian Aid Coordinator, will be working directly with that. Under IEC, there is a subcommittee that works with Title VII and gives input and feedback into that. So, when the time comes that they need the feedback or if IEC is requesting a report from Title VII, then Ms. Livers will be the one to provide those reports to the group.
So, there's... This is a different role than what the former IEC coordinator used to do?
Yes. Ms. Moffett is JOM solely, JOM. So, she's going to be working directly with the Indian Education Committee, and Ms. Livers is working with Title VII. So, there are two different people doing two different programs. But they cross paths when it comes to parental input, they cross paths when the IEC is requesting information from them, from the Title VII coordinator, so, I mean, Indian Ed Coordinator, I'm sorry. So, that's where the paths will still cross. Also, I'm working with Ms. Moffett when they do the interviews for the traditional counselor. She and probably another IEC member will be part of the interview team. Right now, the job postings are still out there, and we'll be working with Ms. Livers on the coordination, how you go about working with the electronic system to start that process rolling.
To me, I don't know, this is just my opinion, but to me, JOM is Indian education, and Indian education is JOM. So, I know there should be more than just crossing paths. I think it's going to be more of a collab... A constant collaboration because this is something that is... Us is aimed at. There's some difference... There's some differences, yes, but I think generally, they're all in the same pot. And you heard the recommendation and the request from our IEC president to have that, the IEC coordinator present at the monthly meetings, and if you could pass that on to the new IEC coordinator, I think it'd be in her benefit also to meet and be with the Indian Education Committee on those monthly meetings. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you, board members.
Last thing, several board members have sent me emails about... Last, last thing, um, several board members have sent me emails about feasibility of a, a board retreat, and if so, if you guys do say it's feasible, I'm really just coming up with a date. Um, so I just put that under my superintendent's report, so it's really not an action item anything, but I, I really need to know what your wishes are, yes, no. Um, if it's yes, I'll get it scheduled within your date parameters you give me. If it's no, then I can, of course, I already have an answer for the board members who are asking. Um, I'm kind of in the catch-22. Um, I can schedule it, but I shouldn't mandate you guys have a retreat, um, but I should facilitate it if it's something you want. So, I put that on there just to say, hey, let's discuss it, so...
Mr. Menini?
Madam President, uh, Mr. Chappetti?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm not one of the emails you about this topic, because I feel that the new board member that we're going to be appointing come into the month, or the middle of the month, needs to be also involved, so I like to table this till later on, personally speaking.
Yes, sir.
I still favor a retreat. I was thinking it orig, originally, of course, thinking of it as a summer activity, I'm not sure why, but getting geared up and, you know, setting a plan, thinking for coming year's school cycle. But I agree that, uh, in two ways, we probably should see if it will work in a little bit later. One is the new member, and the other is that, uh, even in relation to that, filling that position, we're, we're again having special meetings, and I think the board has its limitations in terms of, of being able to allocate, and, uh, a chunk of time at once for a really in-depth retreat. So, I think, I would, I think it'd still be good for us to do, but maybe we need to look forward to August or September even, in terms of when we can pull it off, or find a space for it in our schedules. I, I still think that we have never had, we've had a, a few limited work sessions a while back, we still haven't had a really thorough, in-depth time to, to thrash through a lot of things, so, but I think timing-wise, we probably have to push it back a little, that's my, right looks to me.
Um, I just want to say that, um, I'm also in favor of doing a retreat, um, and it would be a good idea to, you know, have a full board, um, present at this retreat. Um, so, I guess we could try and get it going, um, or maybe even set, well, I guess we can wait on setting a date, but yes, I, I'm in favor of a retreat.
I couldn't remember. Get my answer. Thank, I'm done, Madam President.
Thank you very much.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to ask one, uh, other type of question under the superintendent's report.
Sure, come right ahead.
Uh, for Mr. Chia Patti, or he might pass this on to Mr. Hyatt. We have in our packets, again, as we usually do, a list of personnel actions, and I appreciate Mr. Hyatt catching, catching up on, uh, the, uh, new hires thing for several times that were missing, and he caught us up on that. In this report, we only have one employment, uh, listed. Am I missing anything? And that, that's a custodian, there are no, uh, there are transfers, there are no new certified, uh, employments again. Have we not hired anybody in the last number of weeks? I wonder we got it all, I know we don't have all two.
Madam President, Mr. Hideman? We have hired, typically, Secretariat Personnel puts that on the board, um, actions or board items when they get put into the system. And so, when we roll over the system from the fifteen, sixteen school year to the sixteen, seventeen school year, you will see a mass input of those hires.
Okay.
And so, the hire doesn't become actionable, or at least to be looked at by the board until it gets put into the system, and that's the way the process has been many years.
Okay, so they'll show up.
So, you'll see, you'll see a bunch of them come in, come here on out, because we just turned over the fiscal year.
Okay. And then, the, the second question related to that is, earlier in the year, uh, we had attempted this thing of indicating the reasons for people leaving, and knowing that a lot of times people say personal reasons, we don't really know the story. But, in an attempt, I mean, that's been dropped, it seems, and I think it's still worth, I guess my thinking is, not just for the board, I would think as Personnel Department, we would want to know, are, any insights we can gain from, from what little information people might be willing to share, and knowing it might be limited. I mean, are they going because salaries are higher over across the state line, or are they going, you know?
There's a variety of reasons.
Noxious reasons, uh, we can't control, but, uh, given recruitment and retention is, is a challenge, I think any insights that the Personnel Office could gain, but also the board in the process, I'd like to see that attempted again, knowing that's an imperfect, imperfect system.
Once we get finished with this recruiting season in a month or so, we can provide that data for you. It's better to provide it all at once, so we can see all the numbers together, instead of give it in pieces all along, because sometimes we've hired people, or somebody leaves, and then they come back. So, we've had, you know, half a dozen people that have thought about retirement, were going to retire and changed their mind, and also resignations, where people have resigned, and they go, no, I don't want to go there, I want to stay here, you know, so they're, so that, that data changes, it'd be, it'd be better if we gave it to you once school starts.
Because I, I think when people change and move, often there's a push factor and a pull factor. And the pull factor, what's pulling people away, or what's pushing people away, or, and then even if we knew what's pulling people in, our incentive bonuses, for example, how much of a factor is that? So, those are all risk for the mill, I guess. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on with the agenda, um, we have under, we have number two, board report. We'll begin with Lynn.
Okay, I have one event I'd like to report on briefly. I did attend at NAU in June the seventh, American Indian Indigenous Teacher Education Conference. It was heavily focused on language, and language, uh, restrengthening, and heavily Navajo, there were presentations by Cree people from Canada, and I did go to one Hopi session. Uh, I'll just mention a couple titles. I attended twelve sessions. One was on the family community engagement at Pinion Elementary School. They have kind of a unique effort going there to engage families. Uh, I can describe it, if people are interested sometime. Another one, speaking of growing your own, uh, was titled Grow Your Own: Planting the Seeds of Language Self-Determination. Another was, was a keynote, sort of a keynote, general session, at least I'll call it, by Dr. Tommy Lewis, Navajo Nation DODI, on the state of Navajo education. And then, uh, a number of others that were of much interest. I'll mention the Hopi one, just because, uh, the title of that was, um, a hand, that she presented a handbook of secular Hopi teachings, and it dealt with boundaries, because in Hopi, sometimes even more clearly than in Navajo, there is ceremonial and sacred knowledge that you don't put in a public sphere, you don't talk about it, and you don't teach it in school. So, identifying in their curriculum what things are appropriate to put in their school curriculum, and what things they would reserve for other traditional teaching, that was interesting to me. And the other little detail on that with languages, is I didn't realize, even though I know some Hopi songs, I don't know Hopi language, and Hopi language does not have definite articles. You know, if you say, "The horse kicked the man," in Hopi, you'd say, "A horse kicked man." And then anybody in the room knows Latin? I think Latin has, has Latin have articles? I think Latin doesn't use articles sometimes, so, it's a different, different language structure, and how it gets you, so, that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Menini?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Mitchell?
Nothing.
What's your report?
Um, also for myself, um, I really don't have anything to report to the, um, I kind of use this time for leisure time to rest, so thank you very much, board. Um, moving forward with the agenda. Okay. Three, we have notices and communication, July, um, twenty-second through the twenty-third, we have the New Mexico School Board Association Leadership Retreat. July eighteenth, we have our school board meeting, our Indian, um, Board of Ed, Board of Education meeting. August first, another Board of Education meeting. August nine and ten, Professional Development Days. August eleven will be the first day of school. August fifteenth will be our, another Board of Education meeting.
Do we have any IEC dates? Is, is, do you have any IEC meetings?
Thursday at six p.m., here in the boardroom.
This Thursday?
I think so.
July seventh.
So, a subcommittee, or?
We have a audience subcommittee meeting at the beginning, very short one, followed by the regular IEC meeting.
So, it's not on Saturday?
It's on Saturday.
So, not Saturday, Thursday? Okay.
Do we have the agenda yet?
Yes, it's posted on the website.
Awesome. Awesome, thank you.
Javona?
Oh.
Um, what about the special meeting board dates?
What have I approved there, so?
Oh, you haven't approved them yet. All right. In your, in your communications, I mentioned some dates. July fifteenth at twelve forty-five, the governor will be at Lincoln Elementary to promote her reading initiative.
At Lincoln?
At Lincoln. Um, if more than two of you are going to be there, um, please let us know, so Joan can advertise.
Begin those dates, please.
July fifteenth, twelve forty-five to one thirty. You getting that down, Kyle? We'd love to have the press there. Lincoln Elementary. Um, seven, July twentieth, of course, we have the interim Indian Affairs meeting. I did note that on the legislative website, I looked at the agenda, there are no education topics on it. Um, the discussion is solely going to be on the proposed land division of Fort Wingate, and safety concerns of Sundance Road near Fire Rock. Um, that is a concern for us, because we've had some, bus, all of our buses take that frontage road, so, um, we will, we will have transportation there to, to speak up on the safety concerns.
Where's that going?
Uh, it's at U and M, Gallup.
At what time, sir?
Nine a.m. is when they call it to order. Um, July twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-ninth, you're welcome to stop by here in the boardroom to, for the administrators' conference. And for some reason, I left off the new administrators' conference. Aye, aye. Let me see if I can find it.
Twenty, that was on the twenty-sixth and what?
Twenty-five, twenty-sixth, and twenty-nine, three full days. And like I said, it'll be in this week's board communications, so that way you can see, bless you.
Excuse me.
You can see more of exact topics, in case you want to attend to specific content.
Excuse me, thank.
Uh, July fifteenth is also the new administrators' conference here in the boardroom. Those all start at eight-thirty in the morning.
Would it, would it be reasonable to put out a notice, a blanket notice on those in terms of possible board attendance, whether we show, that way we don't, you know, when it's that many days, and we may, we're not, we're tells when we can show up.
Be happy to, because I remember last year, Mr. Menini popped in, and, and Ms. Menelito popped in, in and out as your schedules permitted, so, just in case three of you pop in at the same time, we can have a blanket notice.
Just in case.
You betcha. Those are the only dates I had for you.
Thank you. Oh, gosh, okay, where are we going now? We did the consent agenda, we did the bill, all business.
F. Nine F? If I'm not mistaken?
Eight H.
No, nine? Nine F?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Trivorn?
Nine F.
You'll have to give the answers to this, because I figured out part of what they want, I, I figured out the right-of-way, but I have no idea what the access they want. So, if you have any questions? F and G, those are the ones we moved to, off-consent action. It deals with the construction of Boardman.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, so, both? Madam President, members of the board. Both of those items deal with the, uh, Boardman project that is going on out here in front. Um, it's been in design for five years now. Uh, so, when they came, part of, part of it was the state had to do a survey of the state's right-of-ways, and upon completion of that survey of the right-of-ways, it was found that the, um, Aquatic Center's fence, which, the city owns the Aquatic Center, but we own the land, so, um, that fence is actually within the state highways right-of-way, okay? Additionally, the state found that the fence that goes along the ditch between the road and the ditch along Mya Mura is actually within the state's right-of-way. And the motor pool building, the garage, the, the eve on the roof actually overhangs their right-of-way. So, their right-of-way is to the, uh, west side of the ditch, basically, along this corridor here. Uh, so what the state has done is given us an easement, or an encroachment license, so that's what one of those items is. The state's not going to have us remove it, um, it's just that they're making us aware that that's within their boundaries, within their right-of-way. Okay, so that's what the first item is. Uh, the other item is actually, they are requesting an easement, um, from the district to pursue the construction of the Boardman Corridor out here. And so, we all, I hope we all know that, that Boardman Corridor is actually going to condense it down from four lanes into two lanes, one in each direction, with a dedicated turn lane in the middle. There's going to be a traffic light out here in front of Central Office, and there's going to be another traffic light installed down here on, um, by the bank. Um, there will also be a school zone that'll be dedicated for JFK, there's also a school zone that will be dedicated for Mya Mura High School, which Mya Mura High School currently doesn't have a school zone light in front of it. Um, so, as part of that, they need an easement from us. Uh, one of the things that they're going to do out front here is this intersection out here where this light is going in front of the building is going to be, is going to be widened. So, they need to come into our property in order to expand that culvert, so that we can have two lanes going out and one lane turning in. Right now, we have about one and a half lanes going out and one lane coming in. So, they're going to make that into a true right-hand turn, left-hand turn, and then an in-turn, and, and then a turn-in also. One of the other portions of this project is the, the D cell lane that comes in over the Aquatic Center to turn into this portion is very short, so they're actually going to extend that out long, longer, so you have a longer D cell lane coming into, into this facility here. Um, and that's part of that easement that they're requesting. The other part of the easement is actually on the north, or is on the east side of Boardman, where they are going to be putting in a sidewalk that basically goes from the police station all the way up to this intersection here. Um, and part of that is they're going to have to build a retaining wall, um, on our part of the property in front of the bus barn, because there's a big hole there, basically. So, they build a retaining wall, pour the concrete for the sidewalks, and so that's what the, the easement portion is, that the DOT is asking for.
Um, Mr. Hideman?
This is, uh, on item F, if I read this correctly, it's less than one-tenth of an acre total land.
Correct.
But, I wondered, since there was no sketch or anything, where, where it was, you've answered that partly. So, when we come out in front of Mya Mura, that ditch is there, I thought they were trying to widen that, that, what happens with that ditch? It's like right there? Is there?
They're, they're not widening, they're not widening Boardman. Um, they're, they're, are you talking about the D cell lane?
Well, what do they need the land for? Isn't it to widen?
They don't need any land in front of Mya Mura.
Okay.
Land they need from us is right out in front of this building for the D cell lane, and they need a little sliver in front of the bus barn where there's this big bowl that they need to build a retaining wall there.
No problem.
No, no problems. I'm, we will... We will probably never, ever use that property for anything.
Okay. The other thing that I didn't quite understand is, we're granting them land, and then they're granting an easement so that we can stay within their line.
Correct.
Right?
An encroachment license is what they call it.
Yeah, so are we encroaching now, or this?
We are, we are. Our fences are encroaching. You know, I, when I got the notice of the encroachment, I called the DOT and said, okay, well, I'll move my fence to the other side, and you guys can do the weeds in the ditch and the sidewalk. And they're like, no, that's okay, we'll give it to you.
So technically, we've been encroaching for?
For decades.
The reason, I just wanted to question, because the way the encroachment license reads, it's a very one-way license. The Department of Transportation has every right to terminate and so on, and there's no equal thing on that, and it may not be a practical problem.
Yeah, it's something that when I talk to the DOT, that they're, you know, since we're another state entity, they're not, they're not, the main thing that they're concerned about is, since it's within their right-of-way, if someone drives off the road and takes out the fence, since theoretically it's in their right-of-way, they should be responsible for it. So if you hit a guard rail on the highway, the DOT pays to get that fixed, or your insurance does, whatever. So what they're, what they want, what they're doing is they're basically absolving themselves of any liability for that. And in the past, we have had, you know, cars go off the road into the ditch and tear the fence up, and to be quite honest, I didn't know that it was in their right-of-way, and we always replace the fence. So it's just going to be kind of the status quo continuing, it's just bawding the eyes and crossing the teeth.
Because I was saying on the other side, we could just keep the land and grant them an encroachment.
They, they won't build on that unless we, unless we give them the easement, so...
Okay, just one other quick question, then, Mr. Chupetti, does this need any kind of attorney review, or is it basic enough?
We have, we have worked with the city attorney on this, and the county attorney, ongoing. Mr. Decker and Mr. Kozelinski have been actively involved since day one on this project. So I feel very comfortable with their advice and what we're doing, and ultimately, it's going to improve the safety of our kids, students, so that is a good question, but I do feel we're in good hands, just piggybacking with the city and county.
So we're going to combine F and G at the time and do one vote? Is that what?
Vote on each.
Oh, well, vote on each, okay. Okay.
Did you discuss both?
Then if there are no other, I'll move, we approve item F. Which is to, for, yeah, for access to the property?
There's a, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Hideman to approve F. Can I have roll call, please? Mr. Menini?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito? Yes. And Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, also vote to approve, I mean, vote, move to approve item 8G.
Motion on the floor to approve G? The approval of the Gallin County Board of Education.
That's the encroachment license.
Encroachment license.
Roll call.
Roll call, please. Okay, who, I'm sorry, who motioned? Lynn, Mr. Hideman did? Hey, Mr. Menini?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito? Yes. And Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
And just FYI for the, the city is actually doing an extension of the water line out here on Boardman to tie in, so there'll be a continuous loop of water service for this area. Right now, we get water service from Mossman, and so if we get any water outages over there, it affects this side of the world. That project is going to start on July 18th, they're going to start mobilizing here July 11th, so Boardman is going to become a little chaotic here in the next couple of weeks, so, just so you know. The school district's aware of it.
Thank you. Moving on to H, approval of resignation from Titus J. Nez, effective June 24, 2006, from Gallin County Board of Education.
I move to accept this resignation, Madam Chairman, as he stated in his letter, and in verbal presentation at the board meeting.
So moved, we have a motion on the floor? Roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito? Yes. And Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. I, we have approval of the process replacing a board member in District 2 to serve the remaining term on the Gallin County Board of Education.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As mentioned in our special board meeting we had, to remind everyone that we're going to be accepting nominations or interests till, till July 13th, and we're to pick up our, those informations on the 14th, correct?
The 14th is verification of residency?
Right.
Or voting registration, sorry.
Right, that's correct.
And then the 15th will disseminate.
That's correct. And then we have a special board meeting scheduled for July 19th at 6:00 at Crown Point Elementary.
Correct.
With that said, I'll make a motion to accept the discussion and, for an action.
Roll call, please.
May I have?
Excuse me, excuse me, thank you. I'm sorry, Lynn.
Just in our packets, the executive summary mentioned several options, but we're simply going, as I understand it, we're going to accept the letters of interest and then interview those candidates. There was the item on here about determining if applicants will be interviewed or not, we're ignoring that, because it's not mandatory, we're just going ahead with everybody that shows an interest, as far as we know, right?
That's great.
Yes.
I think we said during our special meeting, if they would like to provide additional information, like a resume, or, you know, we would review those also, but that is up to the individual. There is a motion on the floor. Can we please, any other questions? If not, I'd like to call roll call. Mr. Hideman?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito? Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Menini?
Yes.
Sorry I skipped you.
Motion for executive, what, motion for executive?
Going to 10, executive session, the board will meet to discuss attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatening or pretending like litigation on capital outlay legal case as permitted under section 10-15-187 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. Can I please have a motion to enter executive session?
Motion for executive.
It is now 9?
19.
9:19.
Roll call, roll call.
Roll call. Mr. Hideman?
Five, 10 minutes, hopefully. Any other questions, Jeff?
Yes.
Ms. Manulito? Yes. I said, I said Mr. Hideman?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Ron?
Would anybody like a cup of coffee to go in there? It'll wake you up or something.